Order is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us. During this meeting, there will be two opportunities to address the planning commission. The first will be a call to the public at the beginning of the meeting for anyone who would like to place an item on the agenda that is not on the current agenda, which we have in front of us. For those of you that are watching and wish to communicate with the commission, there is a link to participate through the Zoom application, which is an app or a computer download that's available online. You can also use a telephone to call in. Information on how to connect via Zoom link or by phone is on the township website and can also be seen on your screen. If you're participating by phone, please call the phone number and once connected, you'll hear, you'll have audio to hear the meeting, but your voice will initially be muted. Please note that the YouTube broadcast of the meeting is slightly behind or delayed from what you will hear on the phone. For this reason, we recommend that you set your phone aside and listen solely to the YouTube feed until you hear your phone number called to speak. When you hear me open the call to the public, please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine on your phone to alert the moderator that you would like to speak. Again, you need to use the Zoom feature to raise your hand, or if you're using a phone, star nine, which will mark your call similar to raising hands. Once I open the call to the public, we will start unmuting participants and callers in the queue who have indicated a desire to speak. We will select individuals, individual callers by name or reference them by the last four digits of their phone number. For phone participants at this time, you should have your telephone available and be prepared to mute your YouTube feed while you talk to the planning commission to avoid any echo or confusion. When you're selected to speak, please state your name, spell your name, provide your address, and begin your communications. At this time, you can address the commission. Please note, any inappropriate language will result in immediate disconnection of your call. First item on tonight's agenda is approval of the agenda itself. Commissioners, please state your name when making or supporting a motion.
This is Jeff. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Jim Martinson supports.
I have a roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Glennis?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
And Chris is a yes. It's unanimous. At this point, I'd like to open that call to the public that I spoke of earlier. We reserve the right to not begin any new business after 10 o'clock tonight. At this time, people who wish to talk to the planning commission for an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. Press star nine if you're already on the call. The information to participate should be on your screen. We will wait approximately one minute for everyone who wants to speak. Remember, this is for non-agenda items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do see a hand raised. I'm not sure. It might be one of our IT professionals helping us with the meeting, but I'm going to go ahead and let this person in. The name is Matt and see if they're a member of the public or not.
All right. Thank you. Matt, go ahead.
Matt, you may have to unmute yourself if you're, if you're listening in the, in the meeting.
Yes. My name is Roy Hibs and I would like to-
Roy, could you please turn down your YouTube feed or whatever you're listening to the meeting on? Thank you.
All right, let's try that again. My name is Roy Hibs and my topic of conversation is probably going to be the on-agenda item. So I don't have anything to add at this point. Thank you for calling on me though.
Well, no, it's the on-agenda item that we're calling to the public for right now. So if you have something that's not on the agenda that you'd like to talk about, this is your time.
No, what I want to talk about is on the agenda.
Okay.
Specifically the rezoning, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Do we have anyone else, Kelly?
No, we don't.
All right, let's give them a minute just because it's, it's a new, new way of doing things. At this point, I'm going to close the call to the public and resume with our regular meeting. Next item on the agenda is declaration of conflict. If any member of the commission has a conflict of interest for any item on the agenda, now is the time to state that. Hearing none, we'll move on to open hearing number one. Review of a request of a rezoning application, planning, or planned unit development application, PUD agreement, impact assessment, and concept PUD plan. The rezoning request is from County Estates CE to Interchange Campus Planned Unit Development, CAPUD, and Interchange Commercial Planned Unit Development, IC-PUD, for approximately 195 acres along the South Latson Road, south of I-96. Subject property includes 177 acres on the west side of South Latson Road, 10 acres on the east side of South Latson Road, and six acres on Beck Road, east of South Latson. Property includes the following parcel, parcels requested to be rezoned to CAPUD, Parcel 471109300 and 001 is requested to be rezoned to IC-PUD. The request is petitioned by Todd Wyatt. At this time, we'd like to hear the presentation from the applicant, so I'll turn it over to the applicants.
Thank you. This is Brad Strater from MKSK on behalf of the Versa Real Estate team. And I think Eric, if you can share a screen, Eric's going to pull up and I will start out a presentation of the project and we can take questions as we go, or we can take questions at the end, whatever is the pleasure of the commission. And then we will be available certainly to help respond to questions from the public when so directed. So this is the overall map. The chairman described our 195 acres, mostly on the west side of Latson Road, and then that seven acre north-south sliver next to the I-96 Latson Road interchange, and then a small area on the east side of Latson Road. Next. I am kind of lead speaker, Brad Strater from MKSK Planner. As was noted, the applicant is Todd Wyatt from Versa Real Estate. Also on the Zoom call today is Eric Lord from Atwell. He's the engineer. He will also be presenting some of the engineering and impact statement information. We have Alan Green from Dykema, who's been the attorney on the project, who will talk about the PUD agreement and update that and answer any questions you have on that. And then also on the team is Julie Kroll from Fiesen Van Den Brink, who did the traffic study and a traffic study addendum, and has had several meetings with the Livingston County Road Commission. She is not participating tonight, but Eric and I can either answer questions you might have on the traffic study, or we can relay them to Julie. This is again the information the planning commission has in the packet. For some of the planning commission, some of these slides are repeat. We've had a couple of study sessions with the planning commission. We've had a couple of meetings with township staff. We've had a lot of correspondence back and forth with the township attorney on the PUD agreement, but we wanted to put together at least an overview for the public that maybe hasn't had a chance to see it. So some of this will be information the planning commission has seen before. Other things are newer changes we've made since we last had a study session or in response to comments from the consultants or township staff. So this is just again a map that the chair already noted of kind of our three areas. On the west side of Latson Road is an area that would be a high-tech research park, business park. On the east side is 10 acres that would be for commercial development, and then that seven acres that north-south linear piece would be for a project identification sign along I-96. And this is just an outline of the presentation tonight. Just going to give an overview of the development, focus on some of the changes, input again from the planning commission and staff. So some of the changes we've made are primarily in the design guidelines. So this is a PUD. So we're asking for a rezoning to planned unit development with specific uses that are allowed and restricted and design guidelines that would be followed by any future development, kind of goes with the land. And we've had a couple of study sessions with the planning commission and some of the changes we'll cover tonight on the design guidelines were to make it more clear of where the design guidelines for architecture apply. It's front facades and facades that are visible from Beck Road or the I-96 interchange and visible to Latson Road on the west side, and then pretty much all sides of the commercial, the four corners of the commercial, anything that's visible, based on direction we had from Brian Borden from Safe Built. We provided a new entry landscape plan and input from the county road commission. We added some additional guidelines on trucks to some questions that you had. We also added some updates to lighting design in terms of the height of the lighting, the foot candles of lighting, and the style of some of the ornament lighting and also lighting at the entrance, ways to have a very significant entrance off to, off Latson Road. And you'll see in a few minutes a video, Eric will run a video showing kind of the views we anticipate from Latson Road to the project. And we've put together a list of permitted and special and prohibited uses. And so we've made some minor updates to that based on, on comments, and we'll show that briefly tonight, but we're not going to go into the detail unless there's questions. And then the PUD agreement is a document that puts this all in specifics. So the design guidelines and the concept plan and the impact statement and the traffic study would all be attachments to the PUD agreement. That's the legally binding document that talks about phasing, that all these standards apply, gets into the details of the improvements to the infrastructure and timing and so forth. And so that's a separate document that would take action by the board in the future. And then after we go through sort of the design guidelines and the concepts, then Eric will cover the impact assessment and utilities, and Alan Green will finish up on the PUD agreement. All right, this is again is our site, and you can see that up in the northeast corner is a proposed freeway sign that we've got information in that later. On the east side of Latson Road, those 10 acres would be commercial. We'll talk about the uses there, but it's anticipated could be a gas station, a hotel, restaurant, or commercial uses, and it is primarily intended to be accessory to the larger business park. Although it would also be the uses that would appeal to people that are along I-86 and also commuters, residents of Genoa Township that are traveling on Latson Road to and from work or up to Grand River Avenue. And just to make it clear, this is a PUD and a rezoning, but we don't know who the users are. We don't know the exact configuration of flats and roads. So there are a couple of different alternatives were provided in the submittal. This is one of the alternatives. It would show a typical road layout. We've got a pretty large wetland area that in the southeast corner of the industrial part of the project that would be preserved and there'd be pathways and woodlands, potentially a connection to the south, to the property of the south, depending on what that use may be in the future. We've got a very significant buffer on the west side to buffer us from residential areas. And we've also got special standards for screening views from Beck Road and I-96, and also special stipulations on design and screening and the height of the hotel in consideration of the residents east of the project around the commercial area.
Can I just stop you? Just one quick question. Could you go back to that slide you just had there? The, what is it, seven acres or 10 acres on the east side of Latson Road? In reading the consultant's letter, that says CAPUD, and it seems to me you had something that said IC-PUD for that piece of property.
Yeah, we'll defer to Brian Borden's letter. If we've mislabeled it, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Also, real quick, I just wanted to remind the commissioners to mute their themselves, and we'll try to hold all questions until they're done presenting, along with the planner and engineer from the township, just so that this format can work a little easier. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to attempt to run this video here, and I'll just kind of tee it up here real quick for everyone. The video is a render, a rendering of the proposed development. And what it does is it, it's, it's from the view of picture like a drone running up Latson Road, starts on the south side of the development and runs along Latson Road to the north towards the, towards the expressway. And then you'll see it, look, look to the left and look to the right. And so you can see the images of what's anticipated in terms of the buildings, in terms of some of the landscaping and screening and that sort of thing. But that's the perspective that you'll have here. Hopefully this comes through without being a little choppy. The technology is, will be what it is. So again, running north on Latson Road, looking to the west. So you can see the first building there, sample type of architecture, landscaping. There's the commercial side to the east, sample architecture and screening and landscaping. And then the view pulls up, and now we're looking south on Latson Road from around the interchange. Again, everything's modeled to scale, so you get a sense of scale of what we're looking at here. These are some of the types of imagery, types of buildings, architecture that's anticipated here. Okay. All right, Brad?
Yep. Back to the slides. All right, so that was an overview, and we'll point out a couple of changes in the design from when that video was prepared. But the next slide we have here is just showing some of the features. So one thing we know is important to the township, looking at the master plan and zoning ordinance and some of the input we've had from the staff and officials, is for amenities and open space. And so this is part of the design guidelines that just shows some of the features that we'd have in terms of pathways and bike parking, charging stations, overlooks of the wetlands, potentially a water feature in the stormwater pond that is in the south, along the south border of the industrial park. We did look, as some asked, at a water feature at our entrance off Latson Road, but because of the topography and everything else, that really wasn't a spot for stormwater. So instead, we're looking at a very significant design entryway on both sides of the Latson North entrance. Next slide. This, this is the signs, the idea of the consistent signs, entry signs at the, on the commercial and the industrial, and that there would be also a sign along the freeway in that seven acres that we mentioned. And this, this is the latest sketch for the entry feature. We would look at pedestrian crossings along Latson Road. This would be signalized. Initially, it might be a flashing signal until the warrants are met to activate the signal. And then this is just a cross-section of what that burn would be along the west property line. And then this is our overall open space plan. The details would come as site plans come in for building the road and the stormwater and so forth, but there would be a specific open space plan and amenity plan. So each phase could stand on its own, but it'd all be designed to connect. And then there was some discussion about the alignment of Sweet Road. And so while the concepts show potentially a, just a slight offset at Sweet Road, the road commission felt that there should be a better distance between Sweet Road into the project and the existing Sweet Road on the east side. So the sketch that's shown in the bottom right is an alternative alignment to provide spacing from Sweet Road. And we have a provision in the PUD that if the county later approves a different alignment, so we directly align with Sweet Road or a slight offset, that it could be built that way. So we've got a couple of different options for that Sweet Road intersection. Similarly, at our north entrance, the commercial and the industrial, we're showing a location that the county approved in terms of its placement of a traffic signal and distance from the railroad crossing. But the county asked that if we do change it through the, the design process, that if anything, we can shift it south slightly, but we can't move it further north. So we've got language to that effect in the design guidelines and in the PUD agreement that that location would either be as shown or mutually agreed upon between the development team and the county and the township to shift it to the south. And then, as I mentioned, we've got a list of uses. I'm not going to go through them all, but we've worked through the, the details with the township on the uses permitted. So we've got a list of the industrial uses, warehousing, office, research, the uses that are permitted, the size of uses that are permitted and so forth for, here's the industrial. Then we have a list. The next slide is the same thing with commercial that allows mixed-use hotels, typical commercial uses that the township would allow. And then just to be clear, as part of the PUD, there's also a list of uses that are more intense and we thought, and you thought, not appropriate for this location, not consistent with the master plan, not compatible with the character of the area. And so we have a specific list of uses, even if the zoning may have allowed them, that would be prohibited. This is the concept, like with the industrial, this is a layout, although this was a little more precise than the industrial, and it shows a, a gas station, a small commercial center that could be restaurants, retail and services for the employees of the industrial technology park, but also for people that live in the area, and then a hotel. And the detention pond is in the east, because that's the best spot for detention pond, and it also helps create a buffer from the commercial to the residents that are to the north and to the east and southeast. And in terms of the hotel, we had a couple of discussions with the planning commission about the heights of the hotel, the materials of the hotel and so forth. So this is the sightline study. So we've got provisions in there that, for the heights of the hotel. The township could allow an additional story if we demonstrate and you find that it's compatible with the area. And these, these drawings were put together just to show that, like a sightline study of views of the hotel with the height. And we feel that where the placement of the hotel is, that it will be compatible with the area. Next. And then just going through the design guidelines, again, the design guidelines, the first slide here is this table of contents. The design guidelines, when we do a PUD, it requires a comparison of existing zoning to the dimensions we're requesting. So we have that. We've got architecture and site and lighting, signed standards for the industrial and the commercial, special provisions for the north border, as I've mentioned before, from Beck Road and I-96, specific landscape guidelines and landscape concepts, and then quite a bit of section on lighting as well, since dark sky and lighting in the area is very important to the township, so we have special standards on lighting. Another key part was the, the look and feel of the development, and so we've provided architectural guidelines that would apply within the commercial innovation park. And these are some photos of example buildings that would be consistent with the size and type of building and architecture that the guidelines would permit and permitted uses. A number of these are from quadrants in Lyon Township and other places that Versa Development was the developer. Next. And then we do have some specific changes to, that I mentioned at the beginning, to the design guidelines from previous versions. In particular, the storage of equipment and vehicles, so they're not in the front yard, the dock doors are not in the front yard. Also, more specific standards on lighting at the request of the township. We've articulated those. And hit the next one, Eric. And then there was questions about the architecture for the commercial. So we've made clear that the architecture would be, these standards would apply to any facade that's visible from Latson Road or within the parking lot or from an adjacent parcel. We've added an image of the Shell Station up at Latson Road and M-59 that also Versa Development did, the Shell Station. But that's an example of the guidelines being applied to a gas station. And then we had a lot of discussion with the planning commission about the hotel architecture. And since we don't know what flag or brand of hotel we'd have, we put in language that's similar to the design of the new hotel on the north side of the Latson Road interchange, but also included photos of other hotels along the 96, 696 corridor. So it'd be a similar quality and materials as to those types of hotels. And then for Latson Road, the video showed a boulevard. So the, the development team would love to see a boulevard or a median along Latson Road in the future. The road commission was less enthused about a boulevard because of the maintenance issues and so forth. So we have two concepts for Latson Road shown in the design guidelines and part of the PUD. One would be a narrow median, as was shown in the video, with landscaping in the median on the sides. And hopeful in the future, the county would, would go with that design. But the fallback is to just have a three or five-lane roadway and move the landscaping that would have been in the median to the edges. So we'd have a very well landscaped edge of Latson Road, very attractive. And the PUD requires larger landscape materials than the township would typically require, so that it would be a more immediate impact in terms of the visual quality of the project. And we do have pathways, all the amenities the township likes to see along Latson Road. We do have, as I mentioned, specific standards on lighting, the height of the lighting and foot candles, and reducing the impact of lighting on adjacent properties. So more stringent standards for the most part over what the township typically requires, although we are looking for, because of the type of development we have here, we're looking for slightly higher poles. So we have fewer poles for better lighting and better aesthetics during the day, and a 12-foot candle maximum, which if LED lights are used, which is pretty standard for a high-quality industrial park such as the ones we showed earlier. With that, I turned it over to Eric.
Great. Thanks, Brad. So from an impact assessment perspective, one of the things that we need to do as part of the rezoning is assess the impact of our development on the, on the site and on the surrounding area. So, you know, in accordance with the ordinance requirements, we focused on impacts to the natural features, the site topography of the site, the public utilities to service the development and traffic. So, you know, as, as we've discussed, the, the site's really comprised of about 195 acres in total. 180-ish of it is west of Latson, another 17 to the east. As you can see, you know, there, there are, there is a little bit of topography that comes across the site. Now this, you look at this drawing and it's, you realize it's a pretty big scale, because we're talking about almost 200 acres here. But, but there's a little bit of topography that comes across here from a drainage perspective. You know, there's some low area on the southwest side of the site, and then over this larger wetland complex on the, on the east side of, of the site. And that, that large wetland is about 27 acres in total. And we really feel that that's, that's a real amenity to this project. And we really feel that that's, that's a real amenity to this project. And so our, what we're going to do is make sure that we stay out of it. We, we will likely have some elements of walking trails and things to, to, to really you know, use that as, as an amenity to the, to the site and to the folks that, that work there. So also to our south is the Marion Genoa Drain. It doesn't, the, the drain doesn't actually run through our site, but it's to the south, which is where much of the stormwater goes. Obviously, the development will meet the county requirements for stormwater management. And, and the ultimate outlet for our drainage will be towards the Marion Genoa Drain primarily. But a couple of wetland pockets on the side, again, we're going to try to stay, stay out of those. The, the main feature really is that 27-acre complex that we have there. Utilities, you know, when the, when the interchange was put in, that was kind of step one. And then step two is some of the, you know, master plan changes and things that occur with the land surrounding and interchange. So all of that has occurred and is in process. And part of that process is what we're talking about tonight in terms of some of the zoning. The utilities is, is a big part of that because as, as of right now, water and sewer, public utilities don't exist on the south side of Latson Road. So part of this development and part of what Versa is doing as part of their development is bringing water and sewer to the south side of the interchange. So we've worked closely with the township and with MHOG. And there are upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility that have occurred in order to accommodate, you know, the growth that's likely to occur in this area. So from a wastewater treatment perspective, those, those improvements are in place. And now it's a matter of bringing the utilities to the site. So you can see from this drawing, in terms of the water main, it's going to come across in two locations. Really, under, under I-96 on the west side of our site will be an extension from the existing main that's there down to our site. And then along the east side, a second extension underneath I-96 that will bring water main along Beck Road, which will ultimately, once the site gets developed, will complete a loop. So it'll be a loop system, once development comes through, bringing water to the site. Sanitary sewer similar does not exist currently on the south side of the interchange. So what is going to happen as part of that infrastructure improvement is ultimately there will be a pump station that is installed as part of this development. And that, that will, that pump station will pump the effluent through a force main across the, and under I-96, over on the northwest side of the site, which will be the ultimate outlet for that. So again, that's, that's all been studied, that's all been designed over the last couple of years. And we're now, you know, to the point where construction is the next step for, for both of those facilities. From a traffic standpoint, I think Brad touched on it a, a bit before, but Fleas and Van den Brink have worked closely with the county over the last year or so, maybe a little more than that, working on their traffic study, studying certain intersections, looking at the projections from this development and what the impacts would be. And, and the, the, the conclusion of that study determined that there was really, really three, three areas to, to focus on here. Latson Road and westbound I-96 would be ultimately needed to upgrade the, the signal there to a fully actuated signal, which means that you know, an actuated signal is one that has a camera on it that reacts to the, the traffic that's in, at the intersection at the moment to optimize the signal pattern. So that would be needed at that, at that interchange as well as a protected left turn phasing for that signal. And we also looked at, or Fleas and Van den Brink looked at, at what point in time throughout this development, realizing that this development is going to take years. This isn't an overnight development, large piece of property. It will be developed in some, some element of, of phases. And it's all of these improvements here are not necessarily needed at, at the first step and the first project that goes in. So, so we looked at it from a, you know, what is the, the tipping point from, from a traffic standpoint, that's going to require some of these improvements. And you can see from a traffic generation standpoint, at 15% of the, the generated traffic for the development is when that, that first item would be needed. The second item is over at Latson Road and eastbound 96. Similar to the last one, and a fully actuated signal would be needed at that intersection as well as a protected left turn phasing for the southbound approach there. And that would be needed at 40% of the site-generated traffic. And then at Latson Road and our proposed north entrance to Latson Road as part of our development. An actuated signal would be needed at that location at a point where we have 60% of the total site traffic generated. So and then, you know, you look, I think Brad spoke about the geometrics along Latson Road. We would love to have that be a boulevard. And we're working with the road commission right now to try to allow that. They're not, as Brad said, as enthused about the boulevard. Creates a few traffic challenges in their mind. So that's an ongoing discussion to see, to see where we, where we end up. But we have an alternate that, that Brad walked through there as well. So. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alan to go through items on the PUD agreement.
Alan, please remember to unmute your microphone.
So sorry of doing this. I think I've never done this before, but I'm Alan Green. I'm counsel for the developer. I'll, I'll briefly talk about the PUD agreement, but before doing so, I thought after listening to, to Brad and Eric to sort of remind everybody how we got here, because we've been doing this in a collaborative effort so long in terms of study sessions and, and, and meeting with staff on this development. We, we sort of need to, I, I think we sort of need to tell the public where this all started in the sense that you know, the township had an opportunity when the Latson Road interchange was built. And the township went ahead and updated its, its planning and its zoning ordinances to deal with the future development of this area. And the master plan calls for business development of the properties that we're talking about here. These are not residential properties and they in the township created these two PUD classifications to sort of guide the development in the future. And what we've tried to do here is it's been a bit of a unique opportunity. We have one property owner who happened to own a great deal of the property within this PUD district that the township wants to see develop. And we've worked very hard to sort of plan a long-term master plan community with, with standard guidelines that would be you know, of, of, you know, significant architectural value. Everything would be compatible with each other. Everything would blend with each other. And it would all be guided by a series of commitments that the developer would be making to the township that would run with the land regardless of whether the developer you know, sold the property or moved on or died or don't, I'm not saying about Todd. But, but just the whole idea is that this was be an exciting opportunity to really plan an area, integrate it with recreational amenities, integrate it with you know, the ability to have architectural control so that the buildings all blend and have the same quality. So that's what we've been trying to do for you know, months now. So the, the PUD agreement is the legal document that accomplishes everything we've been talking about. The commitments are set forth in the PUD agreement. The architectural guidelines are attached to the PUD agreement. And they, this PUD agreement is executed by the parties ultimately. And it's recorded against the property and it runs with the land. And so it becomes a binding contract on the property. And it doesn't matter who develops it or who develops any of the pieces of the site. They all have to develop it in accordance with the commitments that are made here. And so virtually everything you've heard about in terms of the details are in one form or another within the PUD agreement. So I didn't really want to go over that. There is, there is one thing I want to mention to the planning commission. The PUD agreement's been reviewed and, and gone over by the township attorney and, and Kelly and others. And we've gone back and forth and we've got a pretty good what I would say, close to final agreement, subject to, you know, any of the changes that, that might come in the project as a result of this process. But there is one new issue in there, and I do want to point it out to the planning commission. We have committed always to reimburse the township for the sewer and water project that they have designed. And and just recently, the township asked, instead of just reimbursing us for it, can you just build it? I mean, essentially take control of the construction, be like construction manager. And we've agreed that we would do that. But the parties need to, you know, talk about negotiating an agreement as to how that would all work. You know, things like, you know, a typical construction contract, who gets permits? How do we do this? You know, what are the insurance requirements, things like that? So the revised PUD agreement as of today contains our commitment to, to actually construct the sewer and water project. But it'll be subject to on a construction agreement that the parties would have to mutually negotiate and finish up prior to the time that this matter goes to the board. So then the board has it, they'll have everything. So I did want to mention that to the planning commission. So the PUD agreement governs everything from the architectural control issues, the uses that are allowed, the timing of the improvements. Anything like that. I'm sorry, I have a this is almost embarrassing. I've got a dog who's making all sorts of noises back here, but so that's really all I have to say about the PUD agreement unless there are questions about particular provisions in there. But that is, that is the document ultimately that the board would have to approve and execute. Thank you.
So I think that, that concludes our, our presentation here. We're, we're here and we're happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
At this point, I think we're going to turn it over to the township planner and engineer for their take and, and to go through their letters. So Brian, if you'd like to lead that off?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. So for starters, procedurally, there, there are a number of items on the agenda that are in front of you tonight for recommendation to the township board. So I want to make sure that procedurally that, that we're clear on that. So the, the actions, if you, if you choose to take actions tonight, those would be in the form of recommendations. Ultimately, the township board has the final approval authority over the rezoning, the concept plan, the environmental impact assessment, as well as the draft PUD agreement. So that's the process that we're looking at. I did prepare a, a full review letter. It's in your agenda packet. My most recent letter is dated June the 3rd. You will mostly recall and, and the, the applicant's team presented to you that there were a couple of pre-application conferences that were conducted with this particular project. Those were joint meetings conducted with both the board or representatives of the board and of the planning commission, which is allowable under the ordinance. And I think given the scope and scale of the project, I think it was advisable to go through that process. So I think the project's come a long way since its, its first iteration. So to summarize my full review letter, I'm going to start with the, the PUD items. So in order to obtain PUD approval, your ordinance in section 10.02 contains qualifying conditions. Those are outlined in detail in my letter. The quick summary is that our, our letter does find that those standards and conditions are met. The one item that is most important to note as it relates to the qualifying conditions has been discussed at length already, and that is the requirement for the utility extensions. In order to qualify as a PUD, you must have public sewer and water. So that will be a requirement of this project. But as already noted, that is something the applicant proposes already. So any technical comments related to that, I'm going to defer to the township engineer, but that is essentially covering the qualifying conditions. The second part of our review letter is related to the rezoning criteria. Section 22.04 provides a detailed set of standards that the commission is to apply in consideration of a rezoning, be it a conventional rezoning or, or a planned unit development. The standards are essentially the same. So in this instance, the short of it is the proposed zoning designations are consistent with the master plan and future land use map. If I can take one step back, Mr. Mortenson posed a question just before the video. And the formal submittal does identify the proper zoning designations. I think there was just, I think it was the initial slide presented by the applicant where I believe the east area was noted as commercial PUD. It is in fact proposed as the campus PUD. So the east area and the west area, which are the two, two sites, so the two portions that have the Latson Road frontage are proposed as interchange campus PUD. The north area, as referenced in the submittal, which is along Beck and facing I-96 is proposed as the commercial interchange commercial PUD, which is the IC PUD designation. So I just wanted to clear that up in case there was any further confusion on that. So the, the request is consistent with the plan in terms of those designations. Your rezoning criteria do include items related to capacity of infrastructure, and those are items where I defer to your township engineer and/or potentially even the fire authority, if they have comments that are related at this time to the, to the rezoning or even the utilities director. So that's my standard deferment to their technical guidance as it relates to those particular items. And then my closing comments as it relates to the, the rezoning itself are that we believe that rezoning is appropriate in this particular instance. And, and quite frankly, in order to achieve the vision and the goals of the township master plan and more specifically the I-96 Latson Road subarea plan, it's essentially necessary. The, the vision and goals of that plan cannot be achieved under current CE zoning, which is a conventional residential zoning designation, country estate. So all of what is being proposed is consistent with that plan in terms of the designations. The next set of standards are related to the, the concepts plan and the design guidebook that were included as part of this. So this dives into, as the petitioners already noted, dives into building materials, building architecture, types of uses, dimensional standards for each particular area, lighting standards, landscape standards, parking standards, covers the whole gamut of what a, a, a future site development would need to comply with. As it relates to the criteria in section 100306 for interchange PUDs, there are a few deviations that are being sought. So in other words, the PUD allows for flexibility whereby the petitioner can request deviation from conventional requirements if the township believes that it provides the best project or the, and/or, you know, kind of puts the best foot forward for the project and is in keeping with the overall goals and intent of, of the district itself, including the plan. So of note, there are some use deviations that are sought. So that list of potential permitted and special land uses as well as prohibited uses. Some of the uses that are proposed would not necessarily be part of the conventional ordinance. So deviations are sought as it relates to the uses and that list of uses that's included with the submittal. There are some dimensional standards that are also sought for deviation. The, the go-to for the interchange planned unit development by ordinance is tied to the industrial district as it relates to setbacks. And there are a couple of areas where the conventional standard, they're seeking some flexibility there. And, uh, there are a couple of, uh, areas where the conventional standard, uh, they're seeking some flexibility there. Another item that was mentioned, uh, is the lighting. And based on your conventional lighting standards, they are seeking a slightly higher lighting intensity. Uh, it was already noted, uh, I believe 12-foot candles is proposed as the max, save for the gas station, which is proposed at a 12 and a half foot candle max. Uh, conventionally, the township has a 10-foot candle max. So a little bit above, uh, and I believe pole heights, I think we addressed. I think the pole heights were actually brought into compliance, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but I know that lighting was included as part of the list of deviations. Uh, and then lastly, the, the building material standards. Um, under the PUD, the, the ordinance is looking for the use of upwards of 80% plus brick. And the petitioner, uh, has included it in quite, quite great detail within the document that's provided. Um, some alternatives, uh, they are all identified and specifically noted as being high-quality durable materials. Uh, and there are a host of requirements to the architectural design in terms of larger buildings and some of the articulations that would be required to help break up these larger buildings. Um, but the conventional standard of 80% brick, they are seeking, uh, to, to modify from that. As it relates to, uh, building heights and internal setbacks, those are subject to planning commission review and approval. There, uh, there are dimensional tables proposed for both the east and west areas. Uh, so ultimately those, uh, are subject to your, uh, approval. The heights that are proposed, I think it's just worth pointing out, uh, that the, the west side, the largest of the three areas, the west side, the conventional maximum building height would be 55 feet, though a hotel as proposed would be allowed to go to 57 feet, uh, as a by right use. And they would have the potential to seek a special land use approval to go up to 65 feet maximum for that particular use only. That is, that is specific to the hotel. Um, those are generally compatible with what is proposed on the east side, except that the conventional maximum building height is 45 feet instead of 55 feet. And the exceptions that are proposed are related to the hotel use, uh, specifically, and those are the same standards. So 57-foot max would be the by right hotel and 65, uh, or 57, above 57, maximum 65-foot building height would require special land use approval. Uh, because we are dealing with, uh, some separate parcels at this time and, uh, the overall layout and intent of this project is there's going to be a lot of interconnectivity, uh, both for vehicular traffic as well as pedestrians, uh, and potentially even non-motorized. Trails have been referenced, uh, a couple of times in some of the outdoor amenities that are depicted, uh, in the design guide submittal. Um, that being said, the petitioner will need to provide, and they've already acknowledged this, but they will need to provide easements allowing cross-access amongst all of the sites as they currently exist uh, and/or as they may exist in the future. Uh, in other words, if this ends up being, um, a condominiumized development in terms of the ownership, then, uh, they'll need to make sure that there is allowable access from one site to the other uh, via cross-access easements. Um, and then the last thing I want to comment on is relates to the concept plan and design guide is tied to the north area, so that's the back road I-96 area. At this time, uh, the only item that is proposed as part of this PUD is the highway signage. Um, so that would be in the little piece. And I don't know, Kelly, if you can pull that map back up. If not, no big deal, we'll get there. But, um, the piece basically on the north side of the north piece, thank you, uh, would be proposed for a, uh, for highway signage. Uh, the remainder of that property, uh, though it is included in this proposal and it is proposed to go to interchange commercial PUD, um, there are still a number of details that would be required for that site before any other development could occur on that particular property. So of note, um, dimensional standards, building design standards, dimensional standards, uh, I think I said that, sorry, um, architectural site design features, et cetera. So much like we have all the detail for the east and west areas prior to any other development on that north area, the applicant will either need to come back and, um, uh, add an addendum or an amendment to this PUD if it's granted, or they will need to apply for, uh, essentially a, another, uh, PUD as it relates to that particular project. So the rest of those details are, are not included in the PUD agreement at this time. But I think the applicant has stated and acknowledged and understanding that, uh, that will be required of them prior to any other development activities on that portion of the project. Uh, and then my last comment is tied to the draft PUD agreement itself, uh, as was presented, uh, to the commission. Um, there's been a lot of back and forth with the applicant's attorney and the township staff and attorney. Uh, and I know that, uh, updates have been provided. Uh, I am obviously going to defer to any technical comments the township attorney has with respect to the PUD agreement itself. Um, Mr. Green did note the one item, uh, was the utility construction. That is a new item for you. And then I believe there's also been some, uh, discussion, I think, not has been some discussion, but from the, the staff and the township attorney, we need to have some additional discussion as it relates to some of the, uh, uh, development timing uh, in terms of some of the phases and/or the infrastructure, um, and how we're going to get to a point where we have some timeframes within which we're going to see activities start to occur. Uh, that's all I have at this time, Mr. Chair. Happy to take any questions, uh, that you all may have right now.
We're going to save those up, Brian, and we're going to go to Gary. Gary, would you like to take us through your letter, please?
All right, I'll be, uh, uh, much briefer than Brian, so. But anyways, uh, we've gone through the, uh, the documents that were submitted. Uh, several times, uh, the applicant has, has made a bunch of changes to them based on the comments that we've made through the, through the process here. Uh, from an engineering standpoint, as far as, we, we don't have any objections to what they've put together as far as the impacts assessments and such. Um, the biggest thing is this is conceptual right now and, and, uh, as far as the site plan and, and individual site plans will, will need to come forward, obviously, for any type of development that's around there. And the biggest thing that, you know, the nicest thing that with this size of a parcel is that we're going to have essentially master plans for the water sewer and, and stormwater drainage and, uh, and especially traffic also. Uh, that will help us guide, uh, the development as it goes forward. The biggest thing being the stormwater and, and, you know, depending on where the first, uh, that could be quite a, uh, impact to the, uh, uh, to bring, to bring, uh, the whole stormwater system down to that southeast corner and get that put in, but, uh, that's part of the commitment that they've made through this process, uh, to have an integrated plan for the drainage. I don't want to see a whole bunch of small detention ponds on this site. Uh, that's a real distraction from the, the beauty of this land as, since we have such a nice natural feature to be able to use for stormwater drainage. Uh, our le-, our letter goes through a bunch of the items that, uh, that we had as far as, uh, the, uh, the PUD agreement and such, uh, this is the first I've heard of, of the, uh, utilities being constructed by the developer, uh, they are designed, they, uh, so they, we are ready to get that portion going to bring water and sewer to the site. So that, that can happen fairly quickly once, uh, once this process moves forward. Um, and I also put in here, uh, some information, uh, the biggest thing being the Latin road and what the final, uh, layout of that is would be their option one, option two, and that has to go through the, obviously go through the Lewis County Road Commission. Uh, like, I'm encouraged to see the, the landscaping that is, is presented on each side of the, of Latin road to give it more of a gateway-type feature coming in. Um, so that's, that's, that's encouraging to see. Uh, we didn't have any objections to the rezoning and, uh, I don't believe we had any outstanding things, uh, that they needed to address on the PUD agreement or the, um, impact assessment. So from an engineering standpoint, we're, they've addressed all our comments.
All right, thank you, Gary. Excuse me. Um, to the petitioners, you've been in contact with the fire department and discussed, uh, and addressed the, uh, excuse me, uh, any of the fire department letter, uh, conditions. I'm, I'm assuming that you've been in touch with them and are aware of all these? Yeah, nodding heads. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're aware of that. We don't have any, any objections.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I'd like to open up the, the floor to members of the commission for questions uh, to the petitioners or the, uh, engineer or planner. Please state your name and then, uh, address the question to whomever you'd like.
Jim Mortensen. Uh, I, I think this question is both to the developer and our attorney. When I go back to the history of it, we were at one time, we were talking about the developer fronting for half of the sewer and water. And then the other half coming out of, um, not user fees, but hookup fees as time went on. Has that gone away and it's just all, the developer's going to do it? Just, am I reading that right?
Yeah, I'll respond first. The, the initial, uh, PUD indicated that we would pay for the sewer and water project up to a maximum amount of money. And that amount of money was, was, um, projected to be sufficient to do the project, as I understand it. Um, and then, and then it, and then it changed where the township just recently asked, instead of us reimbursing the township for your expenses, would we consider just building it directly? As we would enter the contracts with the, with the contractors to do, to do the job and oversee that as opposed to the township doing that. We indicated we would be willing to do that, but we, we would need to, you know, enter into and negotiate an agreement to accomplish that. So that, that's, that's, that's an open issue still. Uh, but it's not, I mean, I, it's not like a blank check. If it was to cost $5 million, the project would not be feasible. But I think we know what the sewer and water project is, and I think everybody's looked at cost estimates. And I think it was comfortable that it could be done within, uh, the numbers that, that we've been provided.
And let me respond to that. There were some changes in the PUD agreement about whether the money would be paid upfront or how it was going to be financed. And when discussing it with the Versa Group, the thought came out about, uh, them just handling the uh, construction of it so that we don't get hung up on all the language and all the, the financing issues that came about. So that's sort of where, uh, the idea came or the reasons for, uh, the developer to take on, uh, actually building the, the utilities.
Well, so from a township standpoint, it sounds to me like there's some financial exposure there that's not quantified. Am I right?
I know it pretty much eliminates the, uh, exposure to the, to the township for any funds for the utilities to this, uh, development.
Well, Alan, what were you referring to when you talked about something has to be negotiated after? What, what are you talking about?
Yeah, okay, so the, the original agreement indicated that we would reimburse the township for its cost of building the sewer and water up to a maximum number. And that was a protective device because we wanted to make sure that the project was being done in a cost-effective manner. That number was, was, was in excess of what everybody believed it would cost. The township then came back and said, rather than reimburse us after, can you pay us upfront? That's essentially what was asked for. We then came back and said, we need to protect ourselves a little bit. So we said, look, we'll give you a letter of credit that covers the cost and then we will pay you, uh, based upon the draws that, that you get from your contractors. In other words, instead of giving somebody a million and a half dollars and not being assured that you ever get what it is you paid for, we'll just write you checks every month to pay the draws to the contractor. And I think what Mr. Seward's saying, that got a little bit complicated to try to figure that out in terms of language. And so the township recently proposed, why don't you just do it yourself? Um, and that, that way we don't have to worry about reimbursement. You pay the contractor directly, you enter into the contract to do it. It's obviously been designed already by the township engineers. And we said, okay, my only, my only question now is that in order to do that, we're just going to need to enter into an agreement on, on the terms of that between the developer and the township. You know, what kind of insurance, who's going to get the permits, um, timing of construction, things like that. Typical things that you would do if you're hiring, if you were entering into contract with a construction manager or something else. We just need to know the parameters, and I'm sure we'll work that out. We just didn't have time to work it out. And we'll need to work that out before the board, um, acts on the agreement. So the way it reads right now, I believe, is that, is that it says that we're going to do it, you know, consistent with an agreement in the form attached here too, as an exhibit to the PUD agreement. But we don't have that, that exhibit drafted yet.
Would you have that by the time of the board meeting?
Yes, yes, we'd have to have it by the time of the board meeting. Absolutely.
I'm actually used to the developer constructing the utilities to the site as part of their project. So that seems reasonable to me.
I just, um, will jump in here. This is Kelly Van Martyr. Um, we did talk with our utility director, Greg DeTerra, about this scenario, and he supports it. Similar to Jill's comment, um, it's not unusual for a developer to have to construct the utilities to their property. So, um, there's some language that we would want included in that utility agreement as well. Um, but that seems to be the best way to go to protect the township's interest at this point.
This is Mary Ann. Question is, uh, is, in reference to the utilities, are we talking only bringing that down Latin road and not to the interior parks? Or we're talking about all of that?
So, um, the proposed utility plan right now would, would bring it, um, under the highway on the west side of the property. Let me see if we have a drawing.
All the way down Latin road to the end of the prop-, the proposed, uh, project?
No, um, just one second, Mary Ann, let me try and bring up my screen. Sorry for the scrolling. I know it's in here. Um, so here's the, here's a graphic that you can see. Um, so the sewer part of the project is, is really just here. It's on, um, the north side of I-96 near the Grand Oaks Drive. So the sewer is coming, um, under the highway, underneath back road, under the railroad tracks, and will be left, um, here at the, um, the project's northwest corner. The water would come, um, from behind the Kohl's Department Store underneath, um, back, underneath I-96 and then, um, underneath back road where it would then follow back road up. Um, and then go under the railroad tracks and, and be brought to the parcel here. Essentially, that's the bare minimum to get utilities to the property. Um, that does not currently involve, um, a service. So this, in order to serve this with sewer, you would need a pump station, which would roughly be, um, in this vicinity here. So it, it doesn't actually give the property the ability to connect day one, but it, it lays the, the framework and it gets it there. And then if and when the developer gets, um, a user, um, there would be additional infrastructure that they would have to install.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about would be fronted by them and, and initiated by them and paid for by them. It's just the initial bringing it to those three reference points is the two reference points that you just talked about. And then further development, when you develop the, the project itself, that's when it would continue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Jill. I had a question on the lighting. Uh, I'm not understanding why they have to go against the zoning ordinance for the lighting plan. It seems like they can meet. It seems like they can meet our requirements with this brand new development. I didn't see that the poles had been reduced in height. And I think that's important to keep it to our ordinance requirements. And then also the brightness of those lights, the LEDs are significantly brighter. They do dissipate faster, but I think if you bring the poles down, you go to the lower level, you will not have an eyesore for residents driving by this. I think we need to stick with our ordinance in this situation.
If I, I can respond, Brad Strider. We did look at that. We did have special provisions that township staff had suggested to have the lower pole heights when it's with the in-view shed of the adjacent residential. And we do have kind of night sky provisions. It's kind of a modest change of 10 to 12 foot candles, but 12 foot candles is the current sort of standard for good quality LED lighting in a business type park. So that's why we made the change. And then the, the only place we would have taller poles is away from the residential area just to reduce the daytime, you know, the number of poles that you'd see in the daytime. So I can refer to Todd White and Verso. We could probably meet the 10 and, and the height. We just thought overall in terms of quality lighting at night and also aesthetics during the day, that what we had proposed based on input from our lighting consultant was a better lighting design. And it's commonly in communities that have updated their lighting ordinances, it's consistent with that.
Can you give me an example of a community that it would be consistent with?
Novi, Fenton, Michigan, Carmen Avantini, former LSL planner that some of you may know. He's sort of the lighting guy that we used. City of Romulus for their industrial around the airport. Trying to think of others. I think those are some of the ones we had looked at. But we can, we can document that if that's helpful.
It might be. I would like to see what the difference, like how many more poles would it go, you, would you have to go to to meet the ordinance? Versus how many you'd have now, because it seems to me that it might, might not be that many. So I'm not sure.
So we'd probably need a lighting consultant to do that. Could we have a provision if others agreed that we could meet the township lighting standard, but that we would be allowed to go to 12 or this height? If we could demonstrate at site plan approval time that it's a better overall lighting plan and would result in fewer number of poles and better aesthetics?
Well, fewer number of poles isn't necessarily the concern for the township, I don't think. It's more the concern for you. Possibly better aesthetics, but I think it would just, I guess I'd have to see a comparison of the two to be able to make that. And maybe at site plan, it would be an acceptable time.
It seems like a better time to do, because it may depend on the user too and the size of the site. We were hoping to get some consistency in lighting so that the light standards are generally consistent throughout in the street lighting and so forth. But that might be a, I don't know what others on, from the team and the township think, but, and Brian Borden. But that might be a good resolution to be able to show you the details with a particular site when it comes in.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, just while we're on the topic of lighting too, to get back to Jill's point. So the pole heights were corrected in the east area. So to, just to clarify, so that, that was my mistake. So on the east area, pole heights are good. Slight increase in intensity. The west area, they are still, they're proposing the 35 foot tall max pole height, which does also include, it's, I guess it's included within the deviation because the ordinance max conventionally would be 30. But they did add the language that we requested that they would be reduced to not more than 20 feet where they are adjacent to residential, and that is consistent with the current ordinance. So the issues are really twofold. One is the pole, the max pole height in the west area and then the max lighting intensity. So those are both slightly above conventional ordinance max, just to clarify so that we're all on the same page.
Do we have any other questions in this line from the commissioners?
Yeah, on the agreement, our township attorney has some comments, and the two that stick out to me are on compute, computer page 38. Page, actually, page 17 of the agreement. You want to, Joe, do you want to comment? I'm looking at your, your two comments, or yeah, three, but. Well, let's talk about all three comments.
Certainly. This latest iteration of the PUD agreement, we've been going back and forth with Alan on how, if, if the development doesn't go forward, when do site plans expire? Does the PUD agreement expire? And if it does expire, what happens with the zoning? So the version that you are looking at added some language that if they do certain things, which is construction, and then the construction is putting in the roads, the site plan never expires. That's not consistent with your zoning ordinance.
You hit mute.
Your zoning ordinance has a provision for when site plans expire. Typically, it's after 12 months unless there's substantial progress. And the, those, those can be extended. So that's a change. It's the first time that I caught the, the new language and the impact it might have on the, the site plan.
Yeah, I think that's a problem.
Okay. The second comment.
Well, let's, let's deal with this one first.
Okay.
Final site plan approval for a phase shall expire if construction of the phase is not commenced within three years after the approval of the final site plan approval. I, I mean, in and of itself, I'm not sure I understand the problem with that sentence.
And I think we agree. So I'm sorry.
I mean, are we not talking one year versus three years?
No, what the attorney was saying is that if they build part of it, just the roads, for example, or just the utilities, construction started, so it never expires. But they could desert the site if the, the new building owner decides to drop out of the project and you're just left with roads.
And that, that's correct. That's the way I read the language. I don't know if that's necessarily the intent, but that's the way I read the language.
Can, can I comment on that?
Sure.
Because I'm not sure what language you're, you're reading. The, the, there's three sort of time elements here because of the length of the project. The first is we have to commence something within a certain period of time. That was A, and there's no issues regarding that. I mean, we can't just have this approval go on forever and not do anything. B is that, it, B is, I, I agree with exactly what you say. We, if we, once we commence, we have, if we get final site plan for a phase, we have to commence construction within three years. Or that site plan for that phase expires. Okay? The, the one that I think Joe's talking about, that, that we had a little bit of, and I, and I thought it was pretty clear in here. It's, it's a little vague in your ordinance how you treat a, a, a multi, a multi-site phase. So if we go in and get a site plan for, you know, 10 acres of the, of the development, that's phase one. And within that, that, that phase, there are three building sites. Okay? And within, and, and that phase includes putting in the roads for the building sites, putting in the infrastructure, the landscaping, et cetera. You may then, depending on the nature, normally you're going to go in, you're going to have at least one building. I mean, you're not going to just do a, a site, but you build one building on site one, and now you have two other sites, just as if you're building a residential development. And you put in the streets and the utilities and landscaping, you sell five homes, and now you have home sites. Those home sites might not be built on until you have a user for who knows how long. But you don't lose the right at that point to build homes on those sites. So that's all we're saying here. We wanted to, it was a little vague. We just want to make clear, if we build a phase and the phase includes sites on which you can put a building, we don't lose the right to put a building on a site that's otherwise developed. I mean, the site, the site will have the streets, the landscaping, the utilities. And, you know, it might have a sign, site available for sale or, or lease. And until we have a user, then we'll build a building. We just don't want to lose the right to build a building if there is no user for three years. So that, that was the only thing that, that's in there towards the end about that issue. Just to clarify, because it's never that way in, in most ordinance I've seen, but it was just a little vague in your ordinance. So I didn't want, I wanted to make sure that we understood that that's, that that's what would be happening here.
Is there a way to somehow identify that one of those lots will be built on with the building included? Or somehow to tie that, that zoning, if, if you just build the road and it goes vacant for 10 years? You know, how can you tie it to the first building or the first approved site plan for the first building somehow?
I, I could do that. I always assumed that when we'd go with a site plan of any sort, it would include a building. I mean, we wouldn't, we would not be site planning just vacant property without any building. So the whole intent here was you, you would always be site planning a building. My only concern was is that if the site plan included a larger phase, that is, like, like you had a site condominium, think about residential, and you had six units. And you divide, so you're going, and that, that covers whatever, 10 acres or 15 acres of the 200 acres. And you want to put in the infrastructure for that. And you had clearly as part of that, you would have a building. Certainly, you're doing it because you got a user. You didn't want to lose the right to, to develop one of the other sites that have all been developed for that. So I, I could, I agree if that's not clear, we could put it in that there has to be, there has to be a building. And it may never happen too. You may go in individually, but, and, and for each building, you know, do a site plan. But it may be appropriate based upon the design. If you did a cul-de-sac and you had four building sites and the first one was taken, that you do the whole cul-de-sac and develop it and have those sites available, and then you're marketing those sites. You've probably seen that in, in marketing literature where you, you'll have a, a development, and there might be one or two buildings there, and there are three more sites available. Now, each of those sites, I should say this, just, just to be clear, anytime there's another building within that, you have to go through site plan approval. We're still required for every building to go through and get site plan approval. So even if we had a site plan approval for a building and three of the other condominium sites that might go along with that, you know, building two still requires a separate site plan approval for that building.
And I can see where you may want to build the cul, the cul-de-sac first to generate the interest in those lots as well, so.
So that's really all, that's where all we were getting at there. And if you think it needs tweaking, I, I thought it was clear, but I just, I, you know, that's, that's the intent. That's, that's all, that's all we were trying to do there.
Okay.
Jim, is that clear for you?
I would like to, to clarify. The PUD agreement becomes never-ending if they submit a first phase or initial site, final site plan. Then the PUD agreement stays in existence forever. The second question that I raise is the, the site plan for the phase. Once they start any type of construction, that site plan does not expire. And that's a little different than what your ordinance requires. Your ordinance requires that ever, that there has to be substantial progress towards completion within the 12 months. Or they have to come and, you know, get an extension within that 12 months. And there's no limitation in the ordinance as to how many extensions they could get.
Yeah, but they're optional. And in practice, we let people come back frequently. I mean, every year and after maybe three, six, or seven years, we say you got to have a new site plan. I mean, it just, Kelly could speak to that. But we actually do better than I can, but, well, insofar as the site plan is concerned, why don't we say something, just the site plan itself? If a site, not substantial progress, the site plan must be completed, let's say five years. And otherwise it expires, that doesn't mean it can't be renewed. Site plan is one thing. The expiration of the PUD agreement is something else. Hey, I gotta, let's just deal with site plans.
We, we can do that too, but look at the, look at the second set. So the way it reads is that we have to do something within an initial period. If we don't come in with an initial site plan within that seven-year period, then everything, then everything expires. It's done. When we, when we submit a site plan, the first site plan, we have, whatever site plan we submit, we have to start construction within three years of getting that site plan approved. And that gives you time to do engineering and do everything like that. And then for the subsequent phases, look at C. It says after approval of the final site plan for the initial phase, so that's the very first site plan. Okay? Once we submit a site plan for anything, further submittals for site plan reviews and approvals for subsequent phases can be accepted for review, provided we've made substantial progress in the development of the previously approved phases. So in other words, you know, we can't, if we're not making, if we submit a site plan and we're not, and we start construction in a timely manner within three years, and we're not making substantial progress on that, you know, as your ordinance says, on that particular site plan or phase, then, then we can't get another site plan approved.
That's accurate, but the way the language is right now, substantial progress is actions within 24 months. And it's defined to be the roads, the utilities, landscaping. And the language as it is right now says there does not have to be an actual building.
Right.
So, and I, I'm just looking for directions from the planning commission if that's what they want to agree to.
I don't think so, no. I think we do want to kind of tie, unless you're coming in with a phase and you're doing a condominium to start selling the lots. And phase one is you build the cul-de-sac and your infrastructure. And then you go into site plans for specific lots after that. But that's almost more of a subdivision type thing. Or you, you know, I'm just not quite getting how you're developing this in this format. It seems way too open-ended. I understand what you're saying.
How did we deal, go ahead, finish your question.
I understand the way that he's attempting, and, and it makes sense how he's attempting to do it. But, you know, substantial progress should include a building of a site plan that has been site planned. but, you know, substantial progress should include a building of a site plan, uh, that has been site planned. Unless you are specifically building a cul-de-sac with utilities to create lots at that point. There needs to be clarification on that.
I could clarify that. I don't have an objection to that. Again, again, the, the, the issue here is it's, it's such a large project. It's going to take more than the normal time period to develop, and there'll be millions of dollars invested upfront in the project in terms of, um, you know, the amenities and the infrastructure in terms of getting sewer and water there. We just want to make sure that we're not losing the, and, and it's going to be based, it's going to be market-driven. We're not going to, the whole idea is we're not going to put in and tear up the site and put in buildings when there's no users for the buildings. If you go into recession and there's no one that wants buildings, we're not going to build buildings there. But, you know, if we have four buildings up and the development has started and everything, and again, every phase has to stay, you got to go back to the phasing. Every phase has to stand on its own, so it's not going to be a situation where, you know, somebody's going to go in and tear up a hundred acres of land, and it'll just be sitting there vacant. So, we can tighten this up. I understand what you're getting at. We just want to make sure that, for example, when you have, your ordinance talks about substantial progress in the construction, it doesn't define it in, in any way. It doesn't say, what does substantial construction mean? So we try to define it a little bit by saying we're building roads, we're doing this, because we didn't want to be there with a different, maybe five years from now, or eight years from now, with a different planning commission. And all of a sudden, someone gets up and says, I don't really think you made substantial progress, as I understand that term. So we were just, again, if you looked at your ordinance, substantial progress isn't defined. What is, so what is substantial progress mean in the terms of a, of a project like this? So, we just thought we defined it in some way that, losing my voice, sorry. In some way that sounded reasonable, based upon the investment that you're making in building those things. So we could, Joe and I could tweak the language. I mean, I'm not concerned about that, as long as you understand and, and, and allow that kind of flexibility, you know, to define these things so that, you know, we, we don't lose the right to, to build it um, when we made substantial investment in it.
Kelly or Brian, do you have anything to add to this, since we're talking about ordinance?
Um, you know, I guess I've read through this language. Joe and I have talked about it repeatedly. Um, I do really struggle. I know Alan tried to make it very clear, but I, I still struggle with, um, interpreting it. Um, so, you know, I, I think given the direction I'm hearing from the commission, you know, I'm comfortable with the opportunity to just kind of find, fine-tune this so that it makes sense to everyone. Um, I'm not opposed to anything that, that Alan said. I think we're all on the same page. It just needs to read in such a way that, um, we can all understand it. So, I'm comfortable if the commission is, um, with working with Joe and Alan to, to come up with some language. Um, I, I'm not hearing too much, or, um, objection to these timeframes. It's really just what's included. Um, that needs to figure out.
Let me, our attorney, earners money.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Brian too. Yeah, I just wanted to add too, Kelly, maybe there's a, a, a lesson learned from another P U D. I mean, we have several long-term, multi-phase P U Ds in the township.
About is Oak Point.
Oak Point, Livingston Commons, I mean, that, you know, that we have several very large P U Ds that, uh, that still are not quite finished. There's still phases and still sites that are, that are out there for potential, yet they've not, they've not had any expirations placed upon them. So I just wonder if, uh, you know, substantial progress is the one phrase that's been referenced that's in the P U D section within the site plan standards, there is, um, actual physical construction of a substantial nature. And I'm just wondering if from a, a prior P U D agreement, if we've maybe put forth a little better definition to what we're looking for, uh, when we're using those phrases.
That's a good thought. I can, I can do that and see what we've used elsewhere, because you're right.
That'd be good.
Is it safe to say that if we go to a motion this evening, that could be one of the stipulations of that motion, Kelly?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, did we finish with Jim's comments that he wanted from the attorney? Okay. Uh, unfortunately, I had like ten things on here, but I'll start with just a couple. The simplest one is, is this South Latson, or is this Latson? What are we referring to that street?
South Latson.
South Latson. Everything else on there says Latson, so it's South Latson. The, the, the one thing that, that glares out to me that is going to come up in the call to the public is, uh, my question's more towards Brad. Can you go back to the residential area on Clover Bend? And how you are going to protect that area and those homes there from that industrial setting?
Yeah, I think for there, we would just meet the township standards for buffering from residential, so there's no additional drawing or provision, but you already have pretty good standards for a buffering when there's an industrial next to a residential, so we would meet those standards.
So you've already talked about, streetlights will be lower. There will be, what else, what else is there?
A berm or, um, berm and landscaping. And then any of the, uh, exterior facades that are visible would be of the higher quality material.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other one that, uh, in particular, i- is there something particular about the setbacks that, uh, you've requested a, a deviation from the standard setbacks? What precludes you guys from meeting the existing?
I have to, to friend, oh, Brian said that there was some setbacks that were different, so, um, Brian, if you've got the table of what the differences are.
Yeah, so the, so the, the conventional ordinance pushes everything in a C A P U D to the industrial setback standards. So, uh, for instance, in the east area or the commercial area, there are, uh, there's a reduced front yard setback from the industrial, the conventional industrial district. Um, there is, I believe, a provision was put in. I thought there was something else here that I saw. The front in the, on the west side is fine. Um, there's a, just a little bit different as it relates to, um, building heights above thirty feet for the side yards in, uh, the west area or the industrial area. They're just a little different than that. Like, that's not a, that's not language that's included in the conventional ordinance for the industrial district.
Yeah, for the, the industrial, am I muted?
Nope, you're on.
Okay, the industrial height, the fifty-five feet is sort of a standard height for sort of the new type of industrial. Um, that was the height there, the, in the commercial. I think we're generally meeting the standards, but we were looking for the potential of a slight reduction in the front yard so we could shift everything a little bit to the west to keep it farther from the residential.
Well, if, if I recall correctly, and I'm, I'm going back a couple of, uh, submittals and a couple of reviews, I believe the east area or the commercial area, I believe your dimensionals were based off of, you started with the general commercial district, and that's, that's where those were based off of. So it's just a little bit different than the ordinance, which dictates that it should be based off of the industrial district.
Right, right, because they're not industrial uses, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll let somebody else talk if they'd like.
Any other questions from any of the other commissioners at this time?
This is Glennis. I have a, it's probably a silly question, just because I'm kind of new to this. Um, but at what point, because I see that you have a lot of green space that's required in this, and when we look at the video, you know, it's great seeing all those wonderful plants everywhere. And there's a lot of plants everywhere. My question is, is, um, I don't know if this is something that's handled later on or here, but what type of authority does the township have, or is it done through, um, the P U D and site plan to make sure that those elements are maintained over a period of time? Um, so many cities you drive by, you know, it looks all great when it's all first in development, but then, um, you know, four years later, there's nothing but woodchips left. I'm just curious how that's handled.
Yeah, that's handled through the, the P U, that's a fair question and a good question through the P U D agreement and the maintenance, I guess, Alan? If you want to tackle that one?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we cover it in the P U D agreement, but typically what's going to happen, it's like, uh, the other parks, areas, research and development parks that Todd develops. These are generally taken care of, whether it's condominium, site condominium development, but there are, uh, maintenance and use restrictions that apply to the entire park. So everybody's assessed, um, a certain amount of money to pay for the common area maintenance. There's going to be a lot of common areas here, and that's a good question. So there're going to be walking paths, there're going to be, you know, benches, landscaping, uh, you know, air pump stations for bicyclists, that'll all have to be maintained. So that'll, those will all be common areas of the development. And, uh, everybody will be a part of that, and every, and every user and property within the development will have to pay a maintenance fee to cover that.
I under, I understand that actually, um, very well. But what I'm curi, what I'm curious about is, is what does, what does, that, that's relying on the, on the condominium to actually do it. Does the township have any teeth in making sure that happens? If, if the condominium development doesn't do it, and because, you know, I mean, the condominium development could over time decide to, um, you know, keep their costs down and not, you know, replenish that. That's fully within the authority of the condominium board of directors. So my question is, does the township have authorities there?
Well, here's what, your, your attorney will tell you this, but, but here's how I always see it done. So when we go in with the condominium development, let's say the condominium, you know, it all starts with the first site plan, of course. And we would be submitting our condominium documents, master deed, bylaws to the township for review and comment. Um, it would typically go to the township's attorney and, and whoever else, staff, I mean, every township's different. And every one that I've had has a provision in it where the township insists that the township has a right to, you know, independently, if it's, if something's not being maintained, to enter the property, to do it itself, and to put a lien on the property as part of its tax roll. So there's usually a pretty good paragraph that, that, that the township would have to enforce that. And, uh, and, and we typically would never have any objection to that.
Thank you.
But, Glennis, right now, the P U D agreement does not address the la, the maintenance of the landscaping. The concept is that the developer intends to come in with condos, although that's not well-defined under the P U D agreement.
Okay, so we're, okay, so then I guess I'll ask the question then is, you know, how do we, I mean, should it be added that it's protected there? Because I, I'm, I'm just saying, when I drive down, I look, you know, there's many cities, I mean, just even locally within Livingston County, where they've done a lot of great things with landscaping, and then, um, you know, it gets ignored over time, and now it's dumpy. And it looks so pretty when we're trying to present it, um, at the time we're trying to get developed, but, um, you know, what, what, what do we have especially along Latson Road to make sure that it's getting maintained?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may real quick, this is Brian again. So, so Glennis, you, you do have a, a section in the ordinance within the site plan review chapter. So it's section eighteen point twelve specifically, and it's titled Maintenance After Approval. So it is the owner's responsibility to maintain the site in the conditions of the approved site plan. So we do have, there is language within the, the ordinance. Now, whether the commission and ultimately the board wants something a little stronger or more detailed in the P U D agreement, that certainly is, uh, is, is open for discussion. But you do have some protections in place via the existing ordinance. Uh, and if they do not maintain it per the approved site plan, they can be found to be in violation of the ordinance, and then the township can pursue, uh, other means to, to get corrective measures.
Okay.
And there was also for the, the Latson Road landscaping specifically, Alan, maybe you can look for that specific site, but there was some discussion with the, uh, with township administration and, and your consultants about the possibility of a special assessment district or a special district or group of property owners along South Latson in the future that would have funding mechanism to maintain the landscaping in the right-of-way, because the county won't do that. So there is, I think, provision in the P U D agreement that these properties would be part of whatever mechanism the township may develop in the future to maintain the landscaping or whatever elements are within the right-of-way design that the county would not maintain, would push that off to the township.
Yeah, and, and I'm only concerned because you're not putting a couple trees in. I mean, when you look at the landscape plan and you look at the details of it, it's pretty excessive. And, um, you know, that, that's the reason I'm bringing it up. If you're putting a tree every twenty feet down a little boulevard, you know, it's not as big of a deal, but based on what I'm looking at, there's a lot in there, and I'm just worried about it dying off in three years and nothing else happening.
Can I, can you go to paragraph, I think it's eighteen? Okay, well, it's nineteen now in there. So there is, there is this paragraph, maintenance obligations, which says that initially the developer's obligated to maintain all these things until it's turned over to a condominium association. Um, and a condominium association is going to be created with the, you know, in connection with the very first development or site plan. But if, if you want, I mean, I'm not uncomfortable if you want us to add, um, uh, you know, some language here at the end of this, that if the, the, you know, the kind of language that we would have in a condo, condo document that I was talking about, that if the developer fails to maintain it, that the township, um, has the right to come in and, and, and do the work if it wants and charge the property. Same kind of thing you would, you would have in a condo document. I have no problem putting that here if you want it here, but.
Could, could we add it that not just the developer, but the association? Because the developer always keeps it looking good till they sell it, till they sell out. It's when, it's now has to be maintained by everybody that's left there to keep it maintained, is when it gets cheap.
Right.
That's the only reason I bring it up.
Yeah, no, I understand. When, when, we, we could do that when we create the association and have the association documents, you would have all this, it'd be a lot, you'd have all that language in the association documents, and you guys would, would review that and, and ultimately approve that. But, um,
Okay.
Yeah, that's, you know, I could, I could add something here for the developer, but the intent is, you could see this, that, 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 you know, there's going to be a maintenance responsibilities that are going to go with a condominium or an association agreement once, once established, so.
Can we just also add some language that any, um, landscaping or any improvements made within the right-of-way in accordance with this development? So that the right-of-way improvements in the right, or, you know, the right-of-way landscaping and irrigation or pathways are all being taken care of, not just the internal ones. But anything that you build as an amenity, like a pathway in the right-of-way or the landscaping in the right-of-way is a maintenance obligation of this development.
That would, that would have to be something I think we'd have to talk about and think about, because typically you don't want to, if, if you build a, a sidewalk or pathway, you wouldn't want to take responsibility for that. That's the road commission's responsibility, the county's responsibility.
No, it, it actually will fall back on, typically on, uh, the townships. They, they typically will, um, well, I know in, where I used to work, we would have specific landscape agreements for anything built in the right-of-way. We would also have specific path agreements that throws the maintenance responsibilities back onto the developer of these so that they maintain them in front of their property frontage. So anything that was developed with this development, like the pretty beautiful flowers and trees, they are maintaining that over time, not just until they die.
And that's kind of, and Joe, you said it better than I did. That's kind of what I'm worried about, is you put all this great landscaping along the right-of-way. It looks great for the first two or three years. Who maintains it after that, and does it get maintained? Because I, I would rather look at something that's less, that's a little more sparse and, and and better laid out than to put a bunch of stuff in there and see it all die. I, I, you know, I just, I think that's just, you know, and I don't want to hold up rezoning because of it, but I, I think it needs to be looked at. That's all. I, I, you know, I just, I think that's just, you know, and I don't want to hold up rezoning because of it, but I, I think it needs to be looked at. That's all. I mean, less is more sometimes in the long run.
Well, I think they can keep it the way they have it, just add a, a maintenance responsibility to it.
Assuming they want to, yeah.
That's, that's not my call, that's.
That's why I said, assuming they want to.
Call, right.
Call of the planning commission, if they're going to make the improvement, someone has to maintain it, and the board.
We will maintain it, provided that we're allowed to by the county or the township.
Township's not going to maintain anything.
That's not what I said. I said, we will provide, we will maintain it, provided we are allowed to by the county and/or the township.
Is the county.
That's Todd Wyatt for the recording secretary. Thanks, Todd, for, for joining in. Appreciate it.
And I think the, sorry, Brad Street or M. Kiskie, the other provision that was discussed with the administration was that if there is a special assessment or a corridor improvement authority or some other organization, then they would maintain everything, because we only have some of the frontage along South Latson, there are other properties there too. And so that if you're going to have a continuous pathway in landscaping, at some point, there may be an organization and a funding mechanism to pay for it. So I think the things we've talked about for the development property owners, the association would be, seems fine. We'll talk to Todd. You guys talk on your end, but that it could all then be deferred if there is in the future an organization that would be responsible for the maintenance of everything in the right-of-way.
Thank you.
So Brad, if I'm, I'm hearing what we're saying and Todd, that we will put in here, we will agree to, the, the maintenance obligation would, at this point, we, we would, we would have that maintenance obligation with respect to the plantings and installations that we put in in the right-of-way in that regard. And we do have language elsewhere that if there's a more broader base, like you say, a broader base assessment district for, you know, a, a more extensive Latson Road Improvement Project, that we would participate in that. Is that, is that, is that right?
As, as to landscaping, yes. As to something like a sidewalk that is required along the road, no.
That is typical when you have a paved path or a sidewalk along the frontage. I've seen it where, you know, developers enter into a maintenance agreement that the development will then pay for that path to be fixed. The township doesn't have a fund to pave paths out there that I'm aware of. And so this is one way to keep an improvement that is desired and, and looked for in shape with the funding mechanism, the property owners that are adjacent to it. So I would be looking for that.
We, we will repair it, but we wouldn't replace it.
Well, how do you repair, you would have, yes, I guess you could say repair, but if it becomes, you know, potholes, you're going to be taking out sections of it and replacing it. It's not like you can just fill a pothole in a path. You have ADA accessibility requirements that you have to meet that I don't think you could do without doing a proper job, but, you know, I defer to the township engineer on that. Typically, what I've seen in, in, again, where I used to work, we would have a path maintenance agreement for anything along the frontage of the right-of-way that would tie back to the property so that we knew that that path or even sidewalks would be maintained and perpetu, you know, forever. So that we.
What happens when the township or the county has a contractor to come in and puts in, say, a, some sort of improvement goes under the, the path and destroys part of the path and leaves it like that?
The township would have to come in and fix it then. That would be like the utility. That would have, if they put in a utility lead or something and damaged it, but the problem that you would have would probably be, you know, electric, you know, those kind of guys that drive on your pass and things like that. But again, that's, that's typically what I've seen in other townships that develop a pathway system. They tie the maintenance responsibility back onto the development so that they are not stuck with the long-term liability.
But to answer Todd's question about if there's a sidewalk in the road right-of-way and somebody does some work underneath it and causes it to be destroyed, you would have to get a permit from the road commission, the Livingston County Road Commission, not the county, but the road commission. And that permit would require who's ever doing the work to restore it to the previous condition, and they would be responsible for any destruction to any installation within the road right-of-way.
I understand that's the legal mechanism, but I've been around long enough where I see that that doesn't often happen. The contractor disappears or just doesn't do it, and now you have a trip, you have a hazard out there and someone's going to fix it.
Maybe, maybe what we need to do is come up with some kind of economic mechanism. I'm, I'm sort of concerned for a different reason, too. I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about liability of the, the private property owners for, you know, you know, the public using a public pathway. It's one thing when they, when they have access to the pathway across the private property, but when you, when you're going down the, you know, Latson Road and you got bikers and everybody, and they trip or fall, or they go head over heels, then they all of a sudden want to sue the, the association that, that's adjacent to it because they didn't fix a crack. It, it's a real issue that, you know, because it's a public pathway. I mean, it's, who's gonna, who's gonna, you know, who's going to plow that or clean it in the, in the, in the, in the winter? Is that going to be?
Well, Alan, I can step in on that a little bit, and we can look to Canton, because Canton does it at their develops, all, at their developments all day long. Most all of Canton subdivisions and condo associations have surrounding sidewalks that are maintained by the, that are required to be maintained by the association, by the city.
And that's how much, was too, Alan, you're, you're familiar. I mean, REIS just did that development at Seven in Hagerty, they have a bike path maintenance agreement for the frontage of Hagerty.
And that's just really common in the bigger cities.
Both of those are Wayne County, which has different maintenance requirements, though, than Livingston. So I don't know, Brian or Kelly, what is, like with Oak Gunlock and other projects where you have pathways and landscaping, what's been the provision, historic provision that the township has had in the county for maintenance of the pathways or sidewalks?
The township has a sidewalk ordinance, it's zero one, zero three, one, nine, that puts the abutting property owner basically to, to maintain it.
And it even includes in the roadway, if you're looking at section four, the first bullet point, says the owner or owners of all lots, parcels and premises within the township are required to maintain, repair and keep safe sidewalks adjacent to or upon their property and premises in or along a public street in the township. So this ordinance would make it the, the property owner's responsibility.
There's really nothing to argue about, then, is what you're saying. Okay. I mean, if the ordinance requires that, then, okay.
You just may want to share the responsibility, so it's not just the individual, you know, you, you're going to be creating lots, so you don't want just the one.
Yeah, great. Thank, thank you. Yeah, we would do that.
And I think we can add some clarification to this section, you know, what is now nineteen, just to make sure that that's all included.
Okay. We could even refer to your ordinance, too, and that.
Again, Kelly, are we going to leave that to staff or to the attorney as a condition of any motion made this evening?
So, you know, it's really up to the discretion of the commission, what you're comfortable having staff review. I mean, I, I think Joe and I are capable of implementing what we've just talked about, but if the planning commission feels strongly and wants to see it again, you know, it's, it's up to you.
I'm one member, I don't think we need to see this again. I think we can leave it to our attorneys and our staff to fix it. Make these minor, I, to me, I regard them as minor changes, frankly, and very confident in our staff.
Oh, yes.
All right, so let's, can we move on to any additional questions then? Are, are we done with this? Is anyone have anything, anything else? All right, hearing none, any other questions?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Sorry. Only one additional question in regards to the exhibit. The P is, is in reference to having an open forum for purposes of, of the general, general public. And I guess this would be a, a question for council in regards to following the general of the open format for the public. Would there need to be any reference in here with respect to any kind of any kind of documentation with reference to any kind of orders given by the state of Michigan in reference to how the open meetings are being held during COVID? That we're following in compliance to any kind of statutes that the governor would have held?
If I understand your question correctly, under the, and I'm not going to be able to give you the executive order number, but what you are doing right now is permitted through June thirtieth. The meeting, you have to be able to hear the public. The public has to be able to hear and see you. So right now, if you open up the, if I understand your question, open up the public comments section. What you did your last meeting was entirely in compliance with the governor's executive orders and was it therefore in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, this meeting also, because here we are in this meeting, doing a Zoom meeting, are, does there need to be any reference in this document stating that we are in compliance with the governor's orders for a, a public hearing for open, for open meeting purposes?
When you say this document, the PUD agreement?
Your, the document, and I'm sorry, we're looking at the PUD agreement, yes.
No, I don't think that there has to be anything in the PUD agreement that we comply with the Open Meetings Act. I think the minutes have to reflect how the meeting was held and the, the comments were made. And under the Open Meetings Act, if somebody complains, they have a certain timeframe, but it doesn't have to be in this, in this agreement.
All right. I, that's why I defer to council. Thank you.
And Joe, I might add, on the agenda next is to bring any correspondence from persons in the area within three hundred feet of the, you know, of the, the development. Bring the, any communicated letters or that type of thing, and then we will open it up to the public. So that is next on the agenda of items. Do I hear any other questions concerning the documentation in, in any form, the? Let's see. I think we've exhausted everything. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public correspondence. And Kelly, if you wouldn't mind putting that into the minutes, yes, there we go, the public comments also will be coming up after this. If you would take care of that, Kelly, I need something for my throat.
Sure, will do. So I did receive one email this afternoon that I did send out to the planning commissioners, but because it was just sent today and it wasn't included in the packet, I paraphrased the comments. The email was received by Alan Rankin. Mr. Rankin lives at thirty-eight seventy-five Clover Bend Court. And in general, he had four comments and then a suggestion. His first comment was just related to the format of this meeting, concerned with, you know, having, having a Zoom meeting rather than a traditional face-to-face meeting. Secondarily, living on Clover Bend, he's concerned about being placed in the middle of what, what he cites as a commercial area, so their, their street becoming kind of an island surrounded by commercial is his second comment. The third one is just concern with the credibility of the developer. He said they had some issues related to some damage to Clover Bend Court after some of the, the property owners had invested in improving it and the developer, Mr. Wyatt had indicated he would repair it, and it wasn't done, so he has issues with that. The, the final issue is just concern with his property value decreasing. And then lastly, he asked the planning commission to consider postponing a decision until there, there can be an in-person hearing.
All right, thank you, Kelly. At this point, I'd like to open up a call to the public requiring this rezoning request. For those on the, on, that have called in, you can press star nine to raise your hand and wait to be unmuted. For those in the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand to be recognized, and remember to state your name, spell your name, and also provide your address. Kelly, do we have any individuals that would like to speak?
We do. I mean, I just want to add something for the, the benefit of the members of the public right now. I realized earlier today that my desktop computer, while I can watch a Zoom meeting, it doesn't have the ability, I don't have a microphone or speaker, so if somebody's on this, this Zoom meeting but doesn't have a microphone or speakers, then please consider using the call-in number that's on the screen so that you can participate in the meeting. And secondarily, I think some of the people that are on the call through Zoom, you know, may not know how to raise their hand, so I've been trying to number those folks. I will call on everyone that I can see is an attendee. So if you can't figure out how to raise your hand in the Zoom app, you know, please just be patient and we'll get to you. And then just a final ad, I do see some callers coming in, please make sure to press star nine if you want to address the commission. So I'm going to start with, the first person we have is Alan Rankin. Mr. Rankin, can you hear me? You may need to unmute yourself. Mr. Rankin, can you hear us? We can't hear you. All right, so.
Let's leave him in queue, Kelly, and then we'll go to the next, and we'll come back.
Okay. Mr. Rankin, you may consider calling in since we don't seem to be getting your audio through, through this format. Okay, so the next one is caller one three nine nine. Can you please turn down the volume on your YouTube feed if you're watching it that way? That's better. So please give us your name, spell your name for our recording secretary and give us your address, then go ahead and address the commission.
This is resident owner Brenda Daniels. B R E N D A D A N I E L S. The address is one nine four seven, South Latson Road.
Thank you. With that, please go ahead with your comments.
The comment, first off, is that the proper, the property adjacent to the zero three one, within three hundred feet, was not mentioned today in the map of the subject area. So my concern is also, are there only going to be standard accommodations made? There are, it looks to be four, including Alan Rankin that was on the call earlier, one of two on Clover Bend, and we are one of two on South Latson Road that are not in the subject area. So how are we going to be, fit into the, the, the original plan or phase one, two, or three?
So just so I understand your question, because you're not part of the development, you want to know what accommodations are being made to include you or to protect you, or could you clarify a little bit?
One, yes, thank you, Kelly. One, to protect us as a resident. And two, what accommodations are, are being made, or we have not been approached or been asked to be a part of the plan or made an offer to thereof. a part of the plan or made an offer to thereof, as we are aware that most, all the property around us has already been purchased. So we are concerned of, you know, what does our future hold?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, do you want, just to go to the next?
Actually, is, is there anything that the applicant can describe to this applicant? Or give any information to them regarding those issues?
I'm not exactly sure where this person lives. Is it south of the development?
Yes.
We haven't bought any property south of the development. So if you're asking me to buy your property, but if that's the question, we have enough property. And as far as what's going to protect you, the township ordinance and what we're doing tonight will protect you because that's what this planning commission does.
Yeah, the details of the, the details of the buffer might help Ms. Daniels. It's a 50-foot buffer would be provided on the development site. And that would have to have a four-foot-high berm or a six-foot-high attractive wall. And then it requires one canopy tree, like a, like a maple or that type of tree. Two evergreen trees and four shrubs for every 20 feet. So it's a, a wall or a landscaped berm or a wall with landscaping and a minimum, like planted area of 50 feet from where the, the development would abut your property. So that is sort of the buffer that's required by the township ordinance.
Brad, we don't abut her property.
So for clarification, they live at the northeast corner of Sweet Road and South Latson, so.
Okay.
So they're across the street then from Clover, sort of by Clover Bend?
Correct. So the, your property directly borders them to the north? That is the area planned for the more commercial-type uses and then also across Latson Road to the west?
So that's not south of, it's not, I took it to be south of the whole property. Have we, have we talked before?
No.
You're welcome to give me a call and I might be interested in buying your property.
Well, first, it wasn't the first topic of discussion, but I mean, I would love to, we would love to entertain that conversation at least to understand more. We understand why the project is happening. But first and foremost, we've been here for 23 years. And we do want to understand the impact and what is going to be done. And we understand that a berm and standard, you know, accommodations are being made. But from my perspective, our perspective, that's very unsightly. So it's, it's not, wasn't in my plan as far as how we intended to be here and raise not only a family or grandchildren, but to see a berm that's four to six feet high with a wall with surrounding property. So we're very interested in, in knowing what is developing around us and how it's going to impact us in the future and how near in the future this is. I didn't really hear the timeline, if that has been narrowed down at all. If someone has that information, that would be great.
Hallie, what's the future land use master plan say for the Daniels property?
Interchange campus.
Well, Mrs. Daniels or Ms. Daniels, I apologize. I would say that the development of interchange campus and your ability to rezonate interchange campus will greatly increase the value of your property, which is, how many acres, at least five?
Just under, close to five.
You're going to get more for it rezoned to campus interchange than as a single-family house.
I do have to comment on that because the letter I received did not address our personal and the rezoning. So if this is the, the comment that you're making.
Well, Mr. Wyatt is referring to is the fact that the master plan in your, or for your particular property is to be zoned for that campus use, which is a higher density and a commercial zoning, which would possibly increase the value of the property. Your property isn't included in the rezoning tonight because it's only Mr. Wyatt's property that's being looked at. They, they've put together a rezoning for their property specific. You would have to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Kelly, do we have any other callers?
We do. Ms., Ms. Daniels, do you have any more questions? Okay.
Thank you for calling, Brenda.
Okay, so I've just added in the next person. Because this person is participating through Zoom and not through phone, they will need to unmute themselves, which I see they just did. So please go ahead and give us your name, spell your name and your address, and address the commission with your questions.
All righty, thank you very much. My name is Roy Hibbs. And my address is 20919 Greenbrier Circle, South Lyon, Michigan. The reason that I'm calling is because I'm, I'm here and I'm concerned about the situation that's going around my brother-in-law or my, my brother-in-law and my sister-in-law's house. And they are Don and Al Rankin at 3875 Clover Bend Court. Now, um, I guess what I want to do first off is I'd like to just address the elephant in the room. And that's that when I look at this 197, 200-acre redevelopment project, there seems to be a key right in the middle of it. It's left this peninsula of residential or as it's properly zoned, country estates. Okay? And when I look at that, you know, I mean, my first thought, you know, not knowing them and not knowing what's going on. I mean, my first concern is that people look at this development and they think to themselves, oh, look, there's four holdouts there. You know, I mean, these people must be greedy. These people must be being unrealistic. They must have been approached and told everybody to go pound it. You know, I mean, that's, that's what I, that's what I initially think when I look at this, at this plan development. When I look at this rezoning project. And the truth of the matter is, is that there's four parcels here that were zoned country estates. And I couldn't really speak for the people on Latson Road because I think that they're in a different situation. But the people on Clover Bend, and there's only two houses on Clover Bend. You know, back in 2003, 2004, these people came out here to Dirt Road Latson, isolated by Dirt Road Beck. And we all know how hard it was to get across the freeway from here. You know, so there was no speculation involved in these people purchasing this property. They purchased country estate property, built their dream home out here in 2004. Now, I know that at some point, the, you know, word got out that the, that the state highway was, you know, was considering a, an exit here. And, and I understand that the value of farmland and things like that went up. And we know that there were, you know, there were speculators that were in the area. And I mean, and that's what Todd does for a living is he, he acquires property on the ifcome and based on future development. And that's fine, and that's well and good. But parked right in the middle of this thing are these people who built their dream home. You know, in an isolated area that you couldn't get to from here. And suddenly they're an island or a peninsula in an area that we're being protected by, you know, what looks like a levee to me. I mean, we're talking about a four to six-foot-high berm with a wall and some decorative landscaping. And if you look at the Rankins parcel, you know, the Rankins parcel is sided on three or four sides by light industrial development. I mean, that is typically not a buffer. You know, we don't typically go from, from residential, you know, residential estates, country estates to a light industrial district. And we've done this with what basically Panama's to a levee around three sides of their three-acre parcel. And Mr. Green had mentioned that there was no residential involved, but that's not true because there were four parcels involved in this redevelopment that were acquired by Todd, by Mr. Wyatt, that were country estate as well. And those are things that, you know, those are things that are on this private road that are being redeveloped now. And it just seems like, like the whole thing is just putting them in a lurch. And I can, and I can kind of contest to that for a couple of different reasons. I mean, I'm sitting at their kitchen table right now and I can look over my shoulder and I see nothing but trees and grass. And I look out to the front and I look out to the back, which is the direction I'm facing, and I see nothing but trees and grass. You know, I mean, development happens and we understand that. And we all understand the value that comes along with this opportunity for the community and the infrastructure and things like that. But it just doesn't make any sense that these people are stuck in here. And it's as if they don't exist and everybody's ignoring them. I mean, really, except for, except for Jeff. I mean, nobody even mentioned that Clover Bend existed here. And again, it's not because, it's not because they were holding out, it was because they're stuck. Now, let's consider this, we're talking for a period of time about the fact that seven to 10 years from now, we could still be involved in the construction of this project. You know, we've extended the height of the buildings to 55 feet and the size of the buildings to 200,000 square feet. And this is what's going to be on the other side of the berm is they look out the window of their dream home on a country estate-zoned property. So that just doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem rational for me. So I don't know if there's a solution for it. But at the end of the day, they have a situation that just needed to be heard and it needed to be said out loud. And I thank the, you know, I mean, I thank the commission for their time, for their service and their due diligence. And I understand all of the advantages that go along with the development of this size and the impact that it could have on the tax base of the community. And, you know, and the future residential development around it, because these kinds of developments bring people and people build houses. And I understand all of that. But I guess what I'm saying is, why have we just left these people? Why have these people not spoken to the developer in five years? I believe they've had one or two conversations with him. Why have they never received an offer? Why were they just left to languish on, on half of a dead-end street? Doesn't make any sense to me. So I'll close with that, just saying that, that it was just, there's a situation here that just needed to be spoken. So thank you very much for your time and, and, well, thank you.
Roy, thanks for your input. One thing that I would ask, were they able to make the meetings when the interchange came in? And, and it was discussed as far as land use, changes in land use and, and those types of things? Because those are all part of this process.
Mr. Rankin is in the room and he tells me that he was not. I apologize for that. He tells me that he was not invited or made aware of any meetings except for this meeting here just because he happened to fall within 300 feet of the sound redevelopment.
Kelly, can you address that as far as the residents along South Latson Road in, in the adjoining properties? In whether they were contacted or how they were contacted?
Yeah, I do recall discussions with Mr. Rankin during that master plan amendment process. So, you know, I, I do think that they were involved in that. I, I think at the time he spoke out in opposition to, you know, the, the change to campus. You know, keeping in mind that the interchange has been planned since the late 1990s. It's been something that was in the books. And that was really, you know, planned for in, in former versions of the master plan as well. Initially, the master plan called for the commercial-type development to stop at the railroad tracks. And the amendment that we did when the interchange went in did expand it. And many of the people who live in that area were opposed at the time to, to, you know, converting it to something other than the peaceful country dead-end road that they had.
Thank you, Kelly.
If I could just, you know, you tried to reach Mr., Mr. Rankin as your first call. And he is in the here, in the room with me. If he, if he introduced himself, would he have an opportunity to speak to you? He's having a difficult time calling.
Absolutely.
And obviously, we couldn't, you know, we kind of couldn't get through on that first shot. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna step aside and I'm gonna let Mr. Rankin take the microphone. He can introduce himself, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Kelly. Hi, Mr. Chair. My name is Alan Rankin. My name is spelt A-L-A-N-R-A-N-K-I-N. I live at 3875 Clover Bend Court in Howell, Michigan. I seem to have a problem with this because I'm basically surrounded by industrial planning. And this was not supposed to happen. And I'm, I'm very, very upset by this because Mr. Wyatt, when I spoke to him five years ago about fixing the road that his semi trucks tore up and down, his contractor, I apologize for that. He, 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 all he had to say about my property was that it was going to be, you know, it's, your property is, you know, going up in value and that I didn't have anything to worry about and I was going to do really well on my property. And I tried to explain to him, I, I hadn't planned on going anywhere. But if he would like to make us an offer, we might be able to entertain that. But nobody has contacted us about moving. If you, I don't know if you can, Kelly, if you can bring up that topology map that shows the, the outline of the, can you do that, please? The outline of the properties? I would like everybody to see exactly where my property is. And I think you know where I'm at, right, Kelly? Yeah, right there. Okay, so I'm surrounded three sides to that. And, and my neighbor and I, a lot of my neighbors and I have talked about it. We don't understand why Mr., Mr. Wyatt, who comes in here and he's, he's got over half a billion dollars to spend in development, can't buy out four houses to get, to get the, the whole side of Latson Road. So I'm, I'm not mad personally at anybody, but I just, I can't make sense of this. I really can't make sense of this. And I'm trying to protect my investment. My home is my investment. I've put all my eggs in this, in this investment. All my eggs are in this basket and, and I need, I need somebody to stand up for me at this point in time because I don't want this to get ugly, you know? I really don't. And I do not, you know? I don't want to have to deal with the construction for the next 10 years, you know? I don't want to have to deal with this. I'm more than happy to pick up and go find another place to live. But there has to be some sort of, you know, guidelines for me. This is, this is not fair to me whatsoever, Mr. Chair. This is not fair to my wife. It's not fair to my child or my, my family.
Well, I, I would also ask the same thing of you, Alan. This isn't something that happened overnight. In the rezoning, or not the rezoning, but the, the master planning for that area and where that, you know, you were going to be in a situation like this, it's.
Yeah, we're in a situation, Mr. Chair, because you know what? Who, tell me, who, who actually goes out and purchases a master plan when they go to buy a piece of property and buy, and have, have a house built? Because I don't know anybody that does. And honestly, I came out here in 2004, so the master plan was obviously very new. And Mr. Wyatt was nowhere to be found. He was nowhere around. He came out here 12 years ago. Guess what? I've been living here for 16 years. And I'm, you know, I mean, there's, there's no excuse for this. I mean, he's come, he's come by, he's talked to all the people on Latson Road and he's bought their properties. And he's, you know, I, I don't understand really why they even consider developing the rest of the lots on Clover Bend when they were slated to be ranches or colonials. And I think you'll see that. So, and the master plan was changed in 2013. So I, I don't.
And when the master, what is your, your property master plan for then? If, if you understand that it was changed in 13, Mr. Rankin?
What, what's that now?
I'm, I'm asking if you know that the master plan was changed, then you would know.
Because I, I heard that, I heard that mentioned.
Okay, all right. But you were here at that time.
I was here. I've been here since 2004, sir. I've been here since 2004.
What I'm saying is that you had been notified that that area was being considered in the reworking of that master plan.
No, I was not. As a matter of fact, I didn't know anything about no tech's, Tech Plaza or Tech, Tech Campus or whatever. I didn't know anything about it until I got the letter in the mail for tonight's meeting. And that, that really upsets me because, I mean, I see all these nice renderings and, you know, these beautiful presentations, okay? But then I, then I hear about, you know, and then I see, I see this, this lot on Clover Bend that's like 425 feet wide that has, you know, used to have the most road frontage on the road. And I'm, I'm wondering why he has to develop the rest of the lots on Clover Bend Court? Why can't he go around it? Why can't he go back to the original master plan, which? Why can't he go back to the original master plan, which was, it was like an 1,800 square foot ranch or a 2,400 square foot colonial? On those lots? That's, that's, that's what I'm understanding, you know?
Yeah, and, and I understand your concerns, but the master plan is something that takes a great deal of time to get processed through the township as well. And the planning folks here at the, the township went through Spain painstaking meetings and presentations several times to show what was going to, uh, and inevitably be the master plan for that area south of the I-96 Latson Road Interchange. Um, understanding that, um, that there's public notification, whether it's in the papers or sent to the houses directly. WHMI had many, many instances when they were talking about the master plan as well.
Yeah.
So.
Well, master plans, master plans are usually dreams, uh, Mr. Chair. And, uh, honest, honestly, uh, the, the, the one way that I see it is that the, uh, the investment that I have in my home right now, okay, is around $500,000. Now, I know that's none of your business or anybody else is on the call, but the problem that I have is that, uh, you come in here and you put berms all, all the way around my house. Who's gonna wanna buy it? Who's gonna wanna buy it? Who's, who, who would even, you know, I, I don't know anybody that, I don't even think I could sell my house for the next 10 years because of all the construction that sounds like it's gonna go on here. So I feel like I'm not even getting a chance to get out here. You know, nobody even gave me an out. I don't know, you know, Mr. Wyatt bought all these lots across the street from me for dirt floor poorer prices because he got them in foreclosure. And it's like he, he thinks he can just go around. He's just going around. And I'm asking you, Mr. Chair, and I'm asking all the board and the planning and the commissioner, all, all of you, the, the Board of Commissioners, I'm asking you for, uh, a little bit of consideration when it comes to my property and my neighbors. But right now, three sides is a little bit too much.
All right, Alan, I'd like to thank you for your input and also your neighbor. Uh, I think Roy was the one who spoke for them.
Yeah, Roy's my brother-in-law and.
We appreciate you being able to, uh, express your opinions and, um, thank you for being on the call.
Thank you, sir.
Kelly, do we have any others that are, are waiting in queue?
We do, I've got two additional. Um, they don't have their hand raised, but I, as I mentioned earlier, I'm just gonna call on everyone that's in the queue. So we make sure we include comments. So I've just unmuted, but I have labeled as caller number two. If you are on, uh, on the Zoom platform right now and you're hoping to address the planning commission, please, unmute yourself. Uh, we'll give you a minute to, to figure that out. If, if you can't, um, get yourself unmuted, there's always the option to call in. I'll put that back up on the screen and wait for what I have listed as participant number two to comment if they have any comments, which will involve the need to unmute themselves, please.
All right, Kelly, I, I think that they're not going to make it in on the Zoom feed. Uh, you've got the information on the screen, uh, for them to be able to make a phone call. Is there another party on the Zoom as well?
Yep, so I'll go down to, um, caller or participant number three. I've just given you the ability to talk. Um, what you'll need to do is please unmute yourself, um, and address the planning commission. Okay, if you're unable to do that, um, please view the screen. Um, there is a phone number that you can call, entering in a, a meeting number and a password. So if, um, you want to address the planning commission that way, please feel free.
Kelly, I think it may be appropriate at this point, uh, since folks need to either call in or, uh, it, it appears that calling in is the best path in. Uh, maybe if we give them five minutes and during that five minutes, if, uh, any of the commissioners or members, uh, on the line, uh, would like to get up and stretch, um, do that. And right now I've got eight minutes after, let's call it 10 minutes after nine. Um, why don't we reconfirm or re, re-convee, convene, um, at quarter after?
Okay.
Right?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Hi, Kelly.
Oh, is this, oh, sorry, Roy. I was just trying to unmute everybody to see if I could get them in. Oh, oh, I'm gonna rename you so I know who you are and I'll mute you. Apologize for that.
All right, thanks a lot. Hey, um.
So the meeting is still live, just so you know.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the break, Mr. Grejak.
You're very welcome.
So just, um, I guess one final announcement as everyone's coming back here. Any members of the public that wants to address the planning commission, um, during the call to the public, it is currently still open and will be open, um, for only a few more minutes. So if you want to speak on this issue and be added to the record, um, now is the time, please use the information on your screen to call in. Um, and then we will respond. If we don't get anybody, they will close the call to the public shortly.
All right, I'd really like to reopen this June 11th Planning Commission meeting back up. And we are currently in the call to the public. Kelly, do we have any others that would like to add to our?
I have no additional, um, members of the public that have called in or connected through Zoom.
All right, thank you very much. Hearing them, we'll close the call to the public and open the floor for any final questions or comments from the commissioners, uh, with regard to any part of the, um, documents to be approved this evening.
I'll say that one.
My one last quick question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, Brian mentioned in this, uh, that there are some use exemptions, exceptions or deviations. Um, did anyone look at those? Is there any concern on the use deviations and the PUD?
I would hand that back to Brian.
Uh, Mr. Chair, these are, so the use table that's been presented to you has been updated per the pre-application conference meetings. So, I mean, the couple of examples I did cite in my review letter. So one of which is the potential for, uh, a gas station and a drive-through restaurant in the east area. Um, that's one example. Another example is increasing the square footage of a by right use in the west area. Conventionally, it would be 40,000 square feet. It is being increased, uh, up to 200,000 square feet. Uh, these are items that were all discussed during the, uh, initial pre-application conferences.
Awesome, so, uh, that, so the township has already been it through those pre-application conferences. Kelly has a thumbs up. You guys are good.
Yeah, these were, these were, yeah, these were meetings that, and I, I apologize, Jeff, if, if you weren't a participant, um, in those, but those were joint, those were multiple joint meetings of the, uh, representatives of Township Board and Planning Commission. So this list has been, um, discussed, revised, discussed, revised, beaten up, changed.
Awesome, I'm good, I'm good then.
It is, it has been vetted pretty well by a large group of people.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
That was my last question, Chris.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm gonna go down the list just one time since we are on, on a Zoom meeting rather than in person. Mary Ann, any questions?
No, sir.
Jim Mortensen, any questions?
You're on mute. Jim?
No.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Glennis?
No.
Eric?
No.
Jill?
No.
And Jeffrey, you were just up and I have no additional questions. At this point, I would call then for a motion regarding the recommendation of rezoning to interchange camp, or to interchange campus and interchange commercial PUD applications. Uh, commissioners that would like to make this motion, please state your name prior to starting in support as well.
Jim, do you want someone besides you to do this?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll try the first one. This is the easiest one. All right, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a recommendation to the Township Board for the rezoning and PUD application of, oh, good gosh, the rezoning request from Country Estates, the interchange campus plan to pre-UD development, interchange commercial plan to unit development for approximately 175 acres. The properties to be included are the parcels are the following to be rezoned for CAPUD Has requested to resume, rezoned ICPUD. And the request is obviously submitted by Todd Wyatt. Um, I will scroll down here for a second. Um, it looks like, and it seems that the, uh, requister for the rezoning criteria is being met with compliance with our Amendment of Zoning Ordinance Map, which is section 2204. It's consistent, I mean, use all those highlighted bold items that Brian has pointed out. One, it's consistent with the goals, policies and future land use permit of Chinoa Township Master Plan, including the sub area and, and quarter studies. If conditions have changed since the master plan was adopted, the consistency and redevelopment trends in the area is also, uh, capable of the site's physical, ge- geographical, geological, hydrological and other environmental features and host with the use permitted in the proposed zoning district. And the ability to, for the site to be reasonably developed within, uh, one of the use permitted under the current zoning. Uh, the capability of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district, the surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environmental density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics and infrastructure and potential influence on the property values. And the impact of the, uh, the capacity of the township infrastructure and services sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district without compromising the health, safety and welfare of the township. Uh, the apparent demand for, uh, these types of permitted uses, uh, in the requested zoning district in the township in relation to the amount of land in the township currently zoned to accommodate demand. And where zoning is reasonable, given the above criteria determination, the requested rezoning district is more than appropriate. Is more appropriate than another district or amending the list of the permitted or special uses within the district. Uh, the request has not been recent, hasn't been submitted within the past one year. And we also have a conceptual PUD plan. One of the criteria, uh, that has to still be spelled out is the, uh, extension and connection to the public service utilities, uh, being the, uh, water and sewer. And that has to still be worked out.
Does everyone understand the motion or is there any discussion?
I have a question, Chair. This is Jill. Um, was that going to be worked out prior to the board meeting? Is that the only clear, the only clarification?
It would have to be worked out prior to the board, uh, hearing, uh, is my, that's my understanding correct, Jim?
I'm not sure I understand what the, what does, what has to be worked out?
The utility extension contract? The utility extension contract?
That should be included under the PUD agreement. A rezoning shouldn't have any conditions attached to it. It either meets the criteria or it doesn't.
All right. I am okay with that. The maker of the motion is okay with striking that.
All right, any support or discussion?
Support. This is Jill.
Jill supports, and I will have a roll call for our vote. Jim?
Yes.
Glennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Chris is a yes, it passes. Next on the document.
Chairman?
Yes.
Were you, Commissioner DeHaines, were you going to remove the entire sentence about the connection and expansion of the public water utility system?
Correct.
Thank you.
Didn't it have subject to, because to get the PUD rezoning, they had to have the utility, so it's subject to the extension, isn't it?
The rezoning should just be the criteria that he listed. If it meets those criteria. And then the PUD agreement, I think, should spell out the remainder of the details.
I thought the rezoning required the public utilities. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So public utilities are available, you know, it's a matter of of costs and getting them there, but I don't think it's, it's a question of the utilities not being available to serve the properties of that criteria.
It's in the PUD qualifications is the requirement of the utility extensions.
Well, picky, but you know, to be available, it has to be within 200 feet of the property. So at this point, they're not available. So I think something here, that's the only clarification. I would ask our engineer, but to me, available means within 200 feet, and with them not being, that they would have to agree to extend the utilities to meet.
Gary, can you give us some clarity on that?
Well, if the utilities are not, not adjacent or available to the property this time, that is correct. But if they're going to be part of the PUD, I guess that would, that's part of their obligations to bring them to the property to have part of the PUD agreement. Oh, that affects itself though, because you're zoning it to a zone classification, not a not a development, I guess. Does that make sense?
So we're saying that the recommendation for the PUD agreement, if it were to pass, would handle those conditions that you're, we're describing here by Commissioner DeHaines.
I believe so.
All right. So we have a passed motion, our first motion for the rezoning. I'll look for a motion to our recommendation of the PUD agreement.
Well, isn't the PUD plan next? Is the agreement next?
The agreement is next. At least on my.
Yes.
Looking at Brian's letter, not the agenda. Okay.
Well, that's what you get.
Mr. Chairman, I will recommend to the Township Board approval of the PUD agreement dated. I don't know what the date of it is.
It was originally dated May 18th. There were some changes that we submitted today with comments from the township attorney.
Well, okay. Dated May 18th. Subject to the following. The township attorney will work with the developer's attorney to fine tune, or not fine to, to clarify expiration dates of site plans. Also, the township attorney will further coordinate with the developer's attorney to develop some language regarding the maintenance of the plantings in the right of way in the pathway on Latin Road. To assure that this maintenance continues over time. I think that's all I have for the agreement. It's pretty well pretty well covered. That's my motion.
Can you specify that it's the agreement that you're looking at is the one that was in the commissioner's packet?
Do you want to incorporate the comments included by the township attorney in the version dated June 11th?
Yeah, the problem was those comments are subject to change between the two attorneys.
So there were, there were comments, and then there were actual changes to the agreement that were marked up. So I think we'd like for you to accept the marked up changes, and then the attorneys can can deal with the timing issue and the maintenance issue.
Okay. I'll just start over. The dated, recommended approval, recommended the Township Board approval of the PUD agreement dated, what was it again, March or May?
The original agreement was May 18th, and there were amendments today.
Yeah.
June 11th.
Yeah. As amended with changes made by the township attorney on the documented, now dated June 11th, further subject to further clarification for, further clarification of between the township attorney and the petitioner's attorney regarding clarification of expiration date of site plans and maintenance of plantings in sidewalk on the right of way over for a long duration, or just say over time. That's my motion.
Does anyone have anything to add? Any questions? Can I have support? Go ahead, Jill.
Jeff.
Lighting. We were going to kind of get to look at lighting. Were we going to change, is this where the lighting discussion came in?
Whatever.
Get a fourth condition or third condition?
Yeah.
So the beauty design guidelines are where the lighting is included, and that is an exhibit to this agreement. So if you want to have a change to the beauty design guidelines, now would be the time to indicate that.
Yes, I think we should be given an opportunity to compare and contrast lighting meeting our ordinance versus lighting as proposed for the development at a later date when more information can be provided to us, like at the first site plan.
It's a good catch. Thank you.
And then I support.
So you want to get that? Okay.
I'm sorry, sir. I actually, I did not know what you wanted that listed the condition to be.
Yeah, the first two conditions, which are the site plan and the plantings on the sidewalk along south or well in the development itself, itself.
Right, those two I got. I didn't get Jill. I don't know.
The third has to do with Jill's. Go ahead, Jill, if you want to form that for her.
A review of the lighting, the requested lighting variance from the ordinance will be reviewed at the first site plan submittal so that planning commissioners may be able to fully understand the deviation.
I'm sorry, you just have to slow down just a little bit. I'm sorry. Review of the requested lighting variance from the ordinance.
Will be reviewed at the time of the first site plan submittal where additional information and detail can be provided to the planning commission to see more clearly the deviation between what they're proposing and what the ordinance requires.
The 10-foot candles versus 12 and a half.
Right. I don't know.
It's Brian. I'm sorry, real quick, if I may.
Go ahead, Brian.
Can we, can we just not use the word variance? Can we use deviation?
Deviation, yes.
Thank you.
Can you make that correction, Patty? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm okay with it.
All right, so you've supported that, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, and we'll take a vote.
Mr. Chairman? I know I'm out of order, but is this where you want to also add the one that we're going to be talking about, Joe and I, and Kelly be working out the utility construction agreement? Because we don't, we don't, you know, that we need to do before the board.
Yes.
That's a good.
Chair as well, Kelly?
Yes, that should be included.
Yes.
They get through me because we tried to include it in the first one.
Right.
I apologize, Alan.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. Sorry, sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, that's, that's absolutely pertinent. So we are going to include another addition. Can I have that addition formed by one of the commissioners? Actually, Jeffrey, or let's see.
Yeah, just add a further condition that the construction, utility construction arrangements will be worked out between the two attorneys and township staff?
Yes, prior to the middle to the township board.
Right, okay, prior to submittal to the township board.
I'm okay with that still.
And I have support from Jeff? Any other discussion or questions? Everyone understands the motion? Glennis?
Hi.
Eric?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Done, mute.
You're on mute, Mary Ann. Thank you. Jim?
Yes.
And Chris is a yes, it passes unanimously. Next up, I would consider recommendations or a motion regarding the recommendation of environmental impact. If you're going to make this motion, please state your name and whoever supports, do the same, please.
Mr. Chairman, I will recommend to the Township Board approval of the impact assessment dated June 19th, 2019. For the properties. Probably list the properties as Jeff Denham's listed.
Well, yes, I'll do that.
It's listed in the case, basically, that entire string of property identification numbers.
Yeah.
Yep, understood.
Do I have any questions from the commission or concerns? Everyone understands. If I have a second. Let's put it to a vote. Eric?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Glennis?
Yes.
Chris is a yes, it's passed unanimously. I need one more motion. This is for, regarding the recommendation of conceptual PUD plan, which was dated 5/2020.
Mr. Chairman, I will recommend approval of the conceptual PUD plan for the Latson Road property south of I-96 dated May 20th, 2020, subject to the following. The requirements of the township engineer in his letter of June 3rd, 2020, and of the Brighton Area Fire Authority in their letter of March 26th, 2020 will be met. Easements will be required to allow cross-access for vehicular and pedestrian traffic in each of the project areas. Details will be required for the highway sign uses dimensional standard, or uses dimensional standards, building and site design, etc. Prior to development of the north area. That's my motion.
Support for, for discussion?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just the, because this is the conceptual PUD plan, we've talked about the fact that Livingston County Road Commission is not thrilled with the idea of that boulevard. It's great that there's still both options in there. But does that, does that come into play in this conceptual PUD plan, that there's still two options sitting there?
Really?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think it does. You know, we recognize the county has some concerns with the media, and I think it's still our preferred option right now. You know, it's their road, so at the end of the day, it's going to be subject to their their review and determination. But I think either one, option one or option two would be preferred for us. So I think the concept plan as submitted, showing that those are, you know, two potential options that we'd like to see is fine.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. So do I have any other questions? Discussion? I have support from Jeff. Let's, we'll vote. Jill?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Glennis?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chris is a yes, passed unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen, and good luck with your development.
We'll be back with them in terms of next step. It'll need to go to Livingston County before it gets over to the Township Board, and obviously, we have some legal work to do, so we'll be in touch.
And now. All of you and of the planning staff and administration as well. So appreciate all your input, and we'll get those changes made.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. It's been, been a year. So it's been great. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Good luck.
It'd be nice to have a real meeting again one of these days.
One of these days.
One of these days. Take care, everybody. See you.
All right, next on the agenda is staff report. Do we have anything, Kelly?
I have nothing to report right now. We, we might have an item for the July meeting, potentially a sketch plan, special use. I won't know till next week if they're going to be submitting or not. It's the only item I have right now in the works. So I'll let you guys know. I know July is a big month for vacation, so as soon as I find out if, if we're going to get an application or not, I'll let you know.
Okay.
It would be nice to keep it under three and a half hours.
And to have it in person, I agree.
Glennis, just so, just so you know, this is not typical. These last two meetings are not typical. I know Glennis was saying this.
Or it's because Glennis is here, or no, it's because she wasn't here last time with her contact. So anyhow.
Like the last one, I would recommend to the Township Board, we get combat pay.
Well, yes. All right. Is there any member of this? Is there any members?
Also add really quick, normally we approve the minutes at the end of the meeting, but we didn't have them because these two meetings were back to back. So if we meet in July, I'll be asked computer review and approve the minutes from the last meeting and this evening. If not, it'll be the August agenda. I just wanted to make a point that we don't have approval of the minutes tonight like we normally would.
All right. Any member discussion? Anybody got anything on their mind?
I'm.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Eric does. Eric raised his hand first.
Yeah, I have a thought. So, you know, the last two meetings, I think it's exciting that vacant property has been looked to, to be developed. But I have a growing concern about our existing developments along Grand River specifically. And so when you think about, you know, just the strip malls, art band, I think as we look ahead to the future, retail's changing quickly as well. And our current pandemic will probably accelerate the Amazon era that we're in. And, and so our township, as I look ahead over 10 years, I think is in a unique spot where it's got a lot of businesses like that. And so I would just, I think for, a thought for us is to consider, how do we become proactive? From a zoning perspective, maybe even taking away the red tape for redevelopment of some of the existing storefronts. And so although it's exciting that vacant land is being developed, it could look pretty weird in five years if Grand River looks not great, which is still the heartbeat of our community largely. So just a, just a concern of mine as I drive up and down that road like you guys do. And as we think ahead to the future, I'd love to figure out creative ways for our community to be proactive in those spaces. So I think they're going to be difficult, the ones that are vacant now are, be difficult to fill. And we could have a couple more in the coming years. So that's my thoughts. I know it's high level, but.
Kelly, is it something that we can be proactive with, with, for instance, you know, the old Carson's, Denham's? I know they're from New York, so it's not something that's, you know, probably on their radar totally. But they can't be very happy to have a big open, white, you know, white box open right now. And you know, how that's going to be repositioned in the market is going to be up to them. So I guess if we could reach out and find out what they're contemplating, just so it isn't all of a sudden on our doorstep, like Eric is saying. You know, it's their property. They have the right to do what they're doing right now. If we're going to give them something different than that in the future, it would sure be nice to understand what they're thinking about before they get here.
Well, that should be part, we're doing a master plan update. That should be exactly what the master plan update ought to be about, trying to recognize what's happening in, you know, five years.
I'll just, just add to that. I think you all got emailed requests to kind of think at those high levels about, I know those questions were difficult to answer, but that was the thought process we were hoping to kind of provoke. And secondarily to that, with the firm that we're using to do the master plan update, we're also doing a market study. And we want to get to the bottom of what do we do with Grand River? Because retail isn't what it is. We don't need all this commercial zoning. So I think that's going to be a huge part of this master plan update is how do we integrate potentially residential into the Grand River corridor? How do we look at what's really needed in the market and try to respond to that? So that these property owners that are holding on to these kind of open vacant big box stores have some options and opportunities to repurpose them.
Is part of that study, Kelly, highest and best use? That type of thing, feasibility?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'd be very interested to see all that.
Yeah.
Kelly, I want to add too, real quick, if I may, because I'm quite involved originally through the chamber, actually, believe it or not, in the city of Howell. But I also am working with Commissioner Griffith. And I know Bill, our own supervisor, is on a committee as well with Carol on looking at more affordable housing and starting to look at the trends that we're seeing with the millennials and the generation X as they're coming in. They're not looking for big houses anymore. I mean, they want smaller homes. They want, you know, access to the cities. We've got Clary University right across from that development. I think there may be some huge opportunity to possibly look at that area as being revitalized for, you know, 30, you know, up to 36, 40-year-olds right now who are looking for alternatives and living in Livingston County and do not want a $400,000, $2,500 square foot house.
Right.
You know, so, and I think the master plan addresses that, but I'm, I'm just saying there are, there is an underground of people that are in Livingston County that are working on that. And, and I know Bill Rogers is very close to it. So that might be some opportunity to.
Yeah, I, my thoughts are all those. I definitely agree that, you know, updating the master plan and all the efforts that will be coming forth in the future will be a part of that. And then once that's defined, I wonder if there's a proactive opportunity as well to actually promote those opportunities to developers. And so I know some communities have those roles. And so not that has to be a separate role, but at least some sort of opportunity to promote that so that we can continue to be just emphasize Grand River as the corridor between, you know, the two communities that we straddle and, and frankly, are the, you know, that's our, one of our unique roles in the community, so.
Yeah, I think we can definitely lean on some of our partnerships with commercial brokers, see what we can do to get the word out there. Definitely dealing with the Inaba Spark and economic development. You know, maybe we even put some initiative towards coming up with a concept plan that we go out and try to say, hey, we'd love to see this here and try to find somebody to be willing to do it. And through that process, we can cut some of that red tape, which I know is, is a huge deal for somebody looking to make an investment.
Has the township ever thought of anything like a DDA type of situation going out and promoting like, I mean, Howell does it? You know, and, and they've been very successful with keeping their storefronts retail. I mean, the alleyway is really, really a neat addition to that. The farmer's market is a really neat addition to all of that. And of course, they've got the charm of the older buildings and that type of thing and repurposing and that type of stuff for those buildings. But have we ever thought about that for Genoa Township?
We have. The problem with us and being a township is that our millage rate is so low. And then the county has to opt in or opt out of DDAs, which basically means they get to choose whether or not we collect the taxable value that would normally go to them. And when you back out, and historically, the county hasn't been real supportive of that in townships. So when you back out the county's taxes, the amount of money that we would capture on just our, you know, low point zero eight mill township, it really doesn't make it feasible to do it because you can't get enough money.
And we really don't have a downtown, so.
Occasionally, you see an economic development director for townships that have like a large, a good tax base of commercial property. And so I'm not suggesting that necessarily, just say, you know, if there's a way for us as a planning commission, township board to look forward 10 years and to be proactive in that. Because I hate for us 10 years from now to wish that we would have done something more for Grand River, so.
Great point.
Anything else?
Just a comment question is from Kelly's standpoint and the folks at American was doing a webinar better than a meeting. And I'll just be curious because next time you're going to pick one of the two, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think I struggled with, with getting people in to talk. I mean, you, you saw that through this format. I don't know if it was on my end or on their end. So I mean, we ended up kind of going into the, the option for people to call in anyway, but um, I don't, I don't, I don't have an adverse opinion either way. I definitely like the ability of panelists and attendees to be separate. So I think I would probably stick with this format.
Yep, I was just curious.
Good.
Thanks.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, moved. Jill?
Gary? And who seconded that? I'm sorry.
I will. Jeff will.
Jeff will, okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Sorry to keep you so.